After work. And everybody could drive in, but the car's all in here, all over here. There may be some crap going on there. Here? Oh, sometimes they might show up or whatever. They could box, yeah. Yeah, tomorrow we'll kind of make sure that everybody's not, you know.
Yeah. Who is Matt? Matt, you off set? Hey, uh, we're gonna do the full intro. Just a cue. Just cueing the, um, cable TV, we're gonna start in about thirty seconds or so, cable TV. Ladies and gentlemen, the hour is being seven oh four PM. I'd like to call the special annual town meetings of May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-one to order. A quorum of one hundred and eighteen registered voters of Abington being present, a quorum has been established. Without hearing any objection, I'll waive the reading of the warrants and the constables return. For the record, the Abbott and Board of Selectmen has called this special town meeting and annual town meeting and issued their warrants. Warrants have been posted, notices have been delivered, in accordance with our town bylaws, for a special town meeting to start no earlier than seven PM, and an annual town meeting to start on or after seven, ten PM. At this time, I'd like to start the meeting by inviting Charlotte Hernandez up to the stage to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If I can ask you to all please rise. You can start it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and through the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Charlotte, hold on one second.
Charlotte goes by the name of Charlie, and she's always been eager to volunteer her efforts for several local groups and charitable efforts. She's also the treasurer of her middle school student council, a member of the teen advisory board for the Abbott and Public Library, participates in youth soccer both as a player and a referee, takes dance lessons and plays trumpet. During this past year, Charlie was selected to serve as this year's Abington Middle School ambassador to Project Three Fifty-One. Project Three Fifty-One is an independent nonprofit organization which encourages and fosters leadership, service, courage, and compassion from one unsung hero from each of Massachusetts' three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns. Charlie is a true and generous leader despite her young age. Most recently, she spearheaded a project to organize a donated clothing collection drive to benefit Cradles to Crayons, another local charity which supports families with children aged twelve and under who especially needed a little extra help during the pandemic. Charlie pushed forward despite COVID-nineteen restrictions, limitations, and in the end, thanks to the generosity of many Abington residents and Charlie's leadership, she delivered twenty bags of donated clothing to benefit dozens of local families with young children. So tonight, we salute you and thank you, Charlie, for your generosity, your compassion, and your kindness towards others. You're an impressive young lady and an inspiration to us all. Thank you. Great job, thank you for doing that. Thank you. This year's two thousand and, uh, twenty twenty annual report was donated to the residents of Abington for your perseverance, your cooperation, and compassion for others during this pandemic. We thank all of you for everyone who chipped in to help get us through these very difficult times. At this time, I'd like to introduce the chairman of the Board of Select and Kevin DiMarzio, who will read off a list of our deceased town employees in memoriam.
Please rise for a moment of silence. We pause each year at our annual town meeting to recognize and pay tribute to those town employees and volunteers who passed away during the last year. We ask you to keep the following people in your minds and in your hearts. James April, John R. Buckley, Marcia Crooks, David Drew, Carolyn A. Dunham, Francis Frank Genowitz, Sylvia Hofseppian, Joseph J. Kelleher, Rory Murphy, Winthrop Patton, Jean A. Pacilis, Alfred Thomas, Roland J. Turcot, Robert Archie Vaughn, Gerald Jerry Walls. Please join me in a moment of silence to pay tribute to these fellow Abingtonians who have gone before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarzio, you may be seated. As we reflect and remember those that we have lost, we also pause together to be mindful of those families who have been affected by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Many among of, among us have lost jobs or income, some of us have lost family members and friends. Let us also again, once, once again, reflect and thank those in our community who worked tirelessly to serve us, our town employees, notably our EMTs, paramedics, and police officers, our resident nurses and doctors and other healthcare workers, our schoolteachers, our grocery store workers, restaurant workers and frontline employees, all who depend on us to be mindful and unselfish each day in order to help protect their lives while they serve us and our families. It is said that, quote, "The ultimate measure of a person is not where they stand in moments of comfort and convenience, but where they stand at times of challenge and controversy." There are so many examples where the employees and residents of our town, many of whom are here tonight, have stood together with love, compassion, patience, generosity, and kindness. Please join me in a round of applause to thank everyone who helped make this town such a wonderful place to live. I'd like to welcome to this special town meeting, and our Abbott and, uh, annual town meeting of May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Our health director, Marty Golightly, asked me to put this up here for anyone who hasn't yet been vaccinated, they just had a very successful vaccination clinic just prior to this town meeting. Uh, this is a great opportunity to help spread the word as to where you can get a vaccination. My name is Sean Riley, I'm the town moderator, and it's my responsibility to preside over and regulate the discussion of tonight's articles, which appear at the special town meeting warrant and in the annual town meeting warrant documents, which are made available to all residents prior to tonight's meeting. If you haven't yet picked it up, the, the special town meeting warrant, the annual town meeting warrant are together, and the budget is attached to the very back of the, the warrants. On behalf of the many, many people who worked together to prepare for town meeting, we wish to thank you for your cooperation and assistance. I want to thank especially our school custodial director, Jamie Hoy, our volunteer ushers, and especially our incredibly informative, very patient, and sleep deprived health director, Marty Golightly, all of whom have helped to protect the traditions and importance of our New England town meeting while assuring that we would use our best efforts to protect the health of our fellow citizens who desire to attend. To that end, thank you, again, to everyone who has volunteered tonight, and to all of you residents here tonight for your cooperation. We'll be using some of the available technology that's built into this wonderful auditorium, and we'll try to display each article as we address them. However, please note that the printed warrant is the official warrant and contains the articles, so if there are any discrepancies between the content in your warrant and that which appears on the screen, the language in the warrant or in the stated motions will control unless otherwise noted. I've been asked to inform you that in case of a need to evacuate the auditorium, exit doors are available both on the, on the far back on each side, on the left and right where you came in, and also on both sides of the stage if you need to evacuate. Please allow me to introduce our town clerk, Leanne Adams, who's sitting to my right, along with an intern, Alisa, Adisa Alaza, who will be entering her junior year in Brown University this fall. She is, uh, doing an internship through Harvard Law this year, and we welcome her to our Abington Town Meeting. I'd also like to recognize our town council, sitting down in front of me, Greg Corbo of KP Law. Mrs. Adams, the town clerk, will be serving as the clerk of this meeting, will be recording the wording of any motions and results of any votes taken by you, the resident voters. Attorney Corbo will be available to answer any legal questions which may arise, and together with the town clerk, will try to help me, the moderator, make sure that we run this town meeting in accordance with proper procedure and as smoothly as possible. Seated to my left are members of the Abbott and Finance Committee, the Finance Committee is comprised of Abington residents who all volunteer to review and analyze each article which is to be voted here at town meeting. Finance Committee Chairman Matt Sallow will be speaking to you throughout this evening, and will later introduce the members of the Finance Committee. I'd also want to take a minute to, to thank and welcome once again our state representative, Allison Sullivan, who's here tonight. We appreciate you being here, Allison. For the rules of the meeting, we ask that you abide by the following rules and guidelines throughout our town meeting tonight in order to allow you the opportunity to ask questions, share your opinions, or simply listen to the debate. Uh, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and the moderator will recognize you at the earliest available moment. In order to maintain our social distancing, an usher will bring a wireless microphone to you, so you will not have to leave your seat area. But please state your name and address, please rise and state your name, uh, before you begin speaking, so the town clerk can properly record the minutes of the meeting. Please make sure to keep all comments and questions relevant to the subject matter of the article being discussed, and do not make any personal attacks or bring personalities into debating of an issue. If the moderator believes that a speaker is straying from the issues, I will direct the speaker to limit his or her portion of the debate to that issue. We also ask that all speakers limit their time at the microphone, so others will have an opportunity to speak and be heard. Pursuant to CDC and public health guidance for many or all of tonight's votes, we will ask you to vote by raising your hand instead of using voice votes. I've also appointed the following tellers who will help us count it if we have any standing votes tonight. The front right and the Finance Committee will be counted by Mr. Steve Wakelin, uh, the front center section will be counted by Mr. Chris Nagel, the front left section and the selectmen on the floor will be counted by Kathleen Riley, the rear right will be counted by Terry Mays, rear center by Liz Shay, and rear left by Liz Shock, uh, Liz Stock. Want to thank all of you guys for helping, they're all volunteers, tonight. Uh, before we go further, I have to appoint a deputy moderator for this evening, and therefore ask that you approve the appointment of former moderator, Michael Frani, as our deputy moderator. So for a first vote, I want to remind you, we're gonna raise our hands. All those in favor of appointing Michael Frani as your deputy moderator, please raise your hand. Thank you, all those opposed? Well, Mike, it's unanimous, first vote is successful, congratulations. Please understand that in order to debate and discuss an item of tonight's meeting, the subject matter must be listed in the warrant in the form of an article. Tonight, the Finance Committee and others will be presenting their motions to either approve an article as it was originally printed, or to propose amended wording with updated information, or to oppose an article, which we call passing over an article. If you have any questions about procedure or how to do something, please feel free to ask us. We will do our best to make sure that we all understand what we're voting on before we actually ask you to declare your votes. With that, I'd like to proceed with the, the special town meeting. We have six articles in the town meeting, upon the conclusion of the special town meeting, we will begin with the annual town meeting. So if you could pull out your warrants, anything, any questions we all set, Madam Clerk? Good to go? All right. Article one of the special town meeting is to pay snow and ice costs. Mr. Sallow from the Finance Committee, the first article is to see if the town will vote to transfer some available funds to a sum of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and ten dollars to cover the FY twenty twenty-one snow and ice deficit or taking any other action relative to it, Mr. Sallow.
The Finance Committee, the Finance Committee moves to approve Article One as printed in the warrant with the funds to be transferred from the fiscal year twenty-one health insurance line item.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve the article by transferring money from the FY twenty twenty-one health insurance line item. Anything to be heard in Article One? If not, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Thank you, put your hands down, all those opposed, please raise your hands, it's unanimous. Article Two, payment of a prior year's bill to Bemis Drug Company in the amount of five thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents, Mr. Sallow.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Two as printed in the warrant with funds to be transferred from the FY two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-one health insurance line item.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve, as Mr. Sallow has just mentioned, anything to be heard in Article Two? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, all those opposed, it is unanimous. Article Three, improvement of the water treatment plant to see if the town will vote to transfer from water receipts to reserve a sum of a hundred and seventy-five thousand to match, a like amount from the town of Rockland for the purposes of purchasing two filtering pressure vessel, vessels for the Hannigan Water Treatment Plant, Mr. Sallow.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Three as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee moves to approve Article Three, anything to be heard in Article Three? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your hand, it is unanimous. Article Four, funding to prepare MVP grant application, Mr. Sallow.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant with the funds to be transferred from FY twenty-one health insurance line item.
Anything to be heard in Article Four? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your hand, it is unanimous. Article Five, funding for MS Ford drainage improvements in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, Mr. Sallow.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant with the funds to be transferred from the FY twenty-one health insurance line item.
Mr. Sallow makes a motion on behalf of the Finance Committee to approve Article Five, anything to be heard in Article Five? If not, all those in favor approving Article Five, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your hand, it is unanimous. Article Six, funding for green community grant to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, twenty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars to supplement a green community grant for energy efficiency, Mr. Sallow.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant with the funds to be transferred from the FY twenty-one health insurance line item.
Motion is to approve Article Six with the transfer from the health insurance line item, all those in favor, or anything to be heard on this article? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your hand, it is unanimous. I should have explained the caveat, the special town meeting is basically kind of housekeeping for the end of the year spending, moving money to pay bills and fund different things. We just concluded that, and we'll be moving on to the annual town meeting for the upcoming bill. Um, if there's no long, anything to be heard on special town meeting, we've concluded the special town meeting business, so I'd like to, uh, uh, adjourn the special town meeting, and we will now move forward with the annual town meeting. A quorum being present, before we get started with our annual town meeting, um, I would like to invite two gentlemen to speak. Uh, Mr. Lambiace will be giving us a summary of our town status, a town state of the union type of deal, but before we talk to, or hear from our town manager, Scott Lambiace, I am thrilled and honored to welcome our Congressman Stephen Lynch, who is here from Washington, DC, and I'd like to invite him to the podium and say a few words to his constituents, that would be great, Congressman.
Uh, thank you very much, Scott, can you hear me? Okay, all right. I think they make these so thick that you can't, they can't hear you, this, this is an idea, you know, they came up with in Washington. First of all, I want to, uh, Mr. Moderator, Sean, I want to thank you for your courtesy. I noticed on the warrant you've got thirty-seven items, so I will be very, very brief. Uh, I just wanted to give a brief update of what, what's been going on in Washington, especially with respect to direct funding to the town of Abington. As you may remember, uh, several months ago, we passed the CARES Act, and as a result of the CARES Act, Congress allocated seven hundred and forty-five thousand dol, I'm, I'm sorry, nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to the town of Abington, but limited to, uh, payment of, of, uh, costs to reimburse you for the health impacts of, of the pandemic. A couple of months ago, we also, well, almost two months ago, we also passed the American Rescue Plan Act, and that provides directly to the town of Abington one point six million dollars, and that money is, is discretionary, so we will rely on the Finance Committee and also, uh, Scott Lambiace and, and, uh, the Board of Selectmen to decide what areas, whether it be schools or, or public safety, what areas that one point six million dollars will be best, uh, allocated towards. We continue to work with your town manager, Scott Lambiace, on the transportation bill, with it'll, that'll be marked up in two to three weeks. Uh, we've tried to identify pri, priority projects that, that Abington would like to see, uh, completed, uh, through funding of the next federal transportation bill. I, I actually sit on that transportation committee, so we got a pretty good chance of, uh, getting some support for the, the projects that, that, that the people of Abington feel, and the town meeting of Abington feel, are, are most important in your town. Uh, I want to thank you, it's a, it's a tremendous honor for me to represent you in Washington, DC. Uh, it's great to work with Allison Sullivan, your state representative, we see a lot of each other during this, uh, during this pandemic, along with Senator Keenan, and, uh, and also members of your Board of Selectmen and, and, and town officials as well, so, uh, God bless the town of Abington, thank you for being involved in town meeting, this is really the most meaningful work, uh, in government that we do today, so thank you for your courtesy. God bless Abington and God bless the United States of America, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Congressman Lynch, it truly is an honor for you to come to our town meeting in Abington, and, uh, we appreciate the work you're doing on our behalf in Washington, thank you. Again, before we start with Article One, the operating budget, I'd like to give the floor to our town manager, Scott Lambiace, who would like to kind of give us an update and summary of the status of the town of Abington's government and budget.
Okay, good evening, all. Good evening, and, and thank you all for coming out. Uh, tonight, we are going to present to you a balanced budget. We're able to do so as a result of some careful planning, mindful spending, and due to the hard work of many individuals. Uh, we, we present to you this budget that does not rely on free cash or stabilization funds. Uh, in fact, I'm happy to report that the town's stabilization funds remain intact at three point two million dollars. I'm equally pleased to report that the budget does not, or does provide some enhanced town services, as well as some additional, uh, positions in public safety. I'd like to thank all of the department heads, the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the town moderator, and the newly formed capital planning committee for all their work on this budget. Uh, in particular, I'd like to thank Finance Director, Assistant Town Manager Sue Moquin, uh, for all of her work leading up to this meeting. It is also important to thank and acknowledge our representatives of the General Court of Massachusetts, Representative Sullivan and Senator Keenan. Uh, their support and guidance, um, continues to be instrumental in getting us through these unprecedented times. The remote meetings that we can do, expedited, outdoor permitting for food and beverage, their strong commitment to Chapter Seventy, funding for the schools and unrestricted government aid funding, have really allowed, uh, businesses to stay afloat, and allowed us as a government to continue to operate, um, and, you know, have these funds that we need, you know, to offer the services that the town expects. Uh, Congressman Lynch, I'd like to thank you for all your support in Washington, securing the CARES Act funding, and most recently, the American Recovery Plan Act funding, and it's this component of the opera that you had mentioned, um, that allows us municipalities to make up for lost revenue. That is, uh, a big part of, of that lost revenue that we can use to secure some greatly needed capital equipment that we otherwise wouldn't be able to purchase this year, so thank you for all that hard work. It was a tough year, but we managed to move forward. Our Health Department with our Fire Department coordinated activities with our School Department, the Council on Aging, the TPW, the police, volunteers from all divisions of the town came together and provided an unprecedented response to the need to get as many people vaccinated as possible. Everyone chipped in, and they all deserve a big round of applause, so I want to thank you guys for that. Now, the road ahead looks very promising, we're about to emerge from the state of emergency, begin our journey back to normal. Some of the things that you'll see in the future from the town is a commitment from my office to provide more transparency and inclusion in our decisions. Uh, we've established a new capital planning committee. You'll see that committee is going to go through some changes, and with some work from the Carlin Center, we're going to put together a long-term capital plan that'll, you know, establish what the financial groups can use to formulate our budget and forecast our future spending. You'll see the Abington Affordable Housing Trust is just getting going, we'll soon be working with our consultant to address some issues, uh, to address the lack of affordable housing and senior housing. Hopefully, our Fire Department will be taking a step closer tonight to developing plans for safe and reliable housing for our firefighters and our firefighting apparatus. Additionally, we'll also be ushering in a new leader at the Abington Police Department. The committee has been formed, a consultant has been selected to assist us with choosing that individual that will lead our department for the foreseeable future. So thank you again for your support, for your willingness to take your time from your schedule, to come out and do tonight's business for the town. One final thanks to Abington Cable, throughout this pandemic, they facilitated countless Zoom meetings with committees and departments. They've gotten footage of many of the events that people weren't allowed to participate in. They helped us as a town keep in touch with you in a lot of different ways. Without their assistance, it would have been very difficult to conduct business over the past twelve months, so I do want to thank them. With that, I'm going to turn this over to our treasure collector, Sonya Hodge. Uh, Sonya will be giving you a brief presentation on the town's current debt schedule. This is something that we'll be trying to get out to you, we'll have it on our website, but also on an annual basis, we'll keep you updated on this. Thank you, Sonya.
Thank you, Mr. Lambiace, the moderator recognizes that treasure collector, town treasurer.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'm going to provide a brief update on our debt, I know this is a dry topic, so I won't get too far into the weeds, but of course, if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Tonight, we'll talk about our debt obligations that we currently have, and we'll also discuss the potential impacts if the, uh, fire station project does move forward. You'll know that on the warrant tonight, we have an article for, excuse me, three and a half million for the div, design phase of the project, and with that in mind, we want to give you more information about what a full project might look like, uh, in terms of your tax bill. Now, the first chart talks, shows our overall debt. This is going to include everything that we have except debt for water sewer and the proposed, uh, South Shore Voctech projects. The bottom section is called Other Debt, that's going to include things like the police station, uh, the senior center, and high school windows and doors, which those will be coming off mostly by fiscal year twenty twenty-nine. The middle section is the middle and high school, the building we're in right now, and then the top section is the proposed fire station. Now, I'm probably not the only one looking at this thinking, why are we, why would we be paying about the same for a fire station as we would be for this building? It doesn't seem to make sense when you look at the, the, the graph there. Now, the reason that that looks that way is we received a very sizable grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority that paid for half of the school. So that brings it down right there, and then we also, in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, would be in year nine of paying off this building out of twenty-five, and each year, it's going to go down a little bit more every single year. So hopefully, that explains why those, uh, those bars look the way they do. Now, on the next chart, this talks about our annual debt payments by funding source. So here, we're comparing our tax levy debt and our debt exclusions. Now, tax levy debt is paid out of the tax levy through our operating budget. The excluded debt is paid by adding on to the tax bills, and when we talk about the tax bill impact, we're talking about excluded debt. So you can see the green line is the tax levy debt, that's just what's built into the budget. Those are going to be projects like the siding at the police station, uh, the new fire engine ambulance, and the Central Street Bridge repairs. That's in part of that green line. The gray bars are the new school, and then the orange bars would be the proposed fire station. So the, the, I'm sorry, the, the, the middle part is the existing debt exclusions, it's not just the school, it also includes the police station, the senior center, and the high school windows and doors. So you can see in fiscal year twenty-nine, it's gone down just a tad, and that's from those three projects coming off. The next slide is the one that I think most people are going to be interested, and this shows the tax bill impact of a proposed fire station. We're estimating it would cost about thirty million dollars, and we would start to pay it in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The different bars are different values of homes. The lower bar is for a three hundred thousand dollar home, the middle is for a five hundred thousand dollar home, and the dark green bar is for a seven hundred thousand dollar bu, uh, home. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five would be the first year we pay it, start paying it, and it would also be the highest amount that we would pay. So you can see for a five hundred thousand dollar home, the cost per year would be about four hundred and fifty-five dollars. And again, a debt exclusion means that it is added on to the tax bill, so that four hundred and fifty-five dollars would go on to your tax bill and be split over four quarters. And my final slide shows all of the debt exclusions, so not just the fire station, but it also includes the middle and high school, and it includes the other excluded debt, like the police station, senior center, and high school windows and doors, which, again, those projects are going to be paid by fiscal year twenty twenty-nine. So in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the first year we would be paying on the proposed fire station, the fire station would be about four hundred and fifty-five dollars on your tax bill, the middle and high school is four hundred and eighty-five dollars on to the tax bill, and the other excluded debt is eighty-seven dollars on to the tax bill, and again, this is just showing a five hundred thousand dollar home. And with that, my update is concluded, and if there are no questions, I'll turn it back over to the, oh, I do see a question.
If I can ask the ushers to grab the wireless microphones. Uh, wireless microphones, I understand are a little more sensitive than the one in front of me and, and Mr. Sallow, so you don't have to shout into the microphone, but please do ha, hold it in front of your face.
Hi, my name is Robert Pratt.
Hi, my name is Robert Pratt, 239 Walnut Street. The money you are talking about, is that per year or is that per quarter?
Per year, and it would be spread over four quarters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to either Town Manager Scott Lambieacy, Chief Nodell, or questions for Sonya Hodge?
Thank you. This is more just a statement, and sir, I'm glad you're here because you're going to be hearing from me later on. I'm not sure how long you're going to be here tonight, but it's perfect. We're going to debate this tonight. We're going to discuss this tonight. As we go, we're going to get into the reasons why we're asking for a fire station. That's not for this moment. However, you just saw the debt that this town, you know, typical small town is facing. We're aware of that. We'll get into that. We need help. I'm also going to be reaching out to our other state senators. Depending where this goes, we're spending a lot of money to other foreign countries. It's been a great year. We need to bring some of the wealth back here to help fund this. I'm not sure how long you were going to be here. I just wanted to make sure that you saw this, you saw the graphs. We'll have our own debates here. My goal for tonight is to try to get a shovel-ready project for this town, assuming the town has an appetite for that, and then try to seek any additional funding to assist us with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Nodell. Anything else to be heard on the presentation? Otherwise, we'll move to Article One to discuss the town's budget. We will do so. We'll move to Article One. Article One is to approve the fiscal 2022 operating budget. You'll be able to follow along. Mr. Sala, for the Chairman of the Finance Committee, has to read a rather lengthy motion to identify how we pay for the budget out of the different accounts. It's detailed for the record. If you can bear with Matt, he will read through it, and you can follow along with the slides up on the screen. So, Chairman of the Finance Committee, Matt Sala, what is your motion on Article One?
The Finance Committee moves to, that the town approve the total sum of $59,685,378 to defray the general fund salaries and expenses of the town for fiscal year 2022, and set forth the detailed budget under the column entitled Finance Committee Recommendations, FY 2022. And to meet said appropriations, raise and appropriate the sum of $58,611,489, and transfer the total sum of $1,073,889 as follows. Fund 450 Cable Access Enterprise Indirect Costs: $6,915. Fund 460 Golf Enterprise Indirect Costs: $31,096. Fund 470 Sewer Enterprise Indirect Costs: $334,911. Fund 490 Water Receipts, Water Special Revenue Fund Indirect Costs: $700,967. And further, the town, that the town approve the following special revenue and enterprise funds for fiscal year 2022 budgets, all as set forth at the end of the detailed budget. Appropriate from conservation receipts, the sum, the total sum of $2,600 to defray the conservation receipts reserved expenses for fiscal year 2022, all as set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from cable access receipts, the total sum of $367,467 to defray the cable access enterprise fund salaries and expenses for fiscal year 2022, with the sum of $6,915 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the cable enterprise fund for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget. So, about halfway there. Appropriate from golf receipts, the total sum of $350,276 to defray the golf enterprise fund salaries and expenses for fiscal year 2022, with the sum of $31,096 to be appropriated from the general fund as shown and allocated to the golf enterprise fund for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from sewer receipts, the total sum of $2,532,171 to defray the sewer enterprise fund salaries and expenses for fiscal year 2022, with the sum of $334,911 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the sewer enterprise fund for funding as set forth in the detailed budget. And appropriate from water receipts, the total sum of $3,01621 to defray the water special revenue fund salaries and expenses for fiscal year 2022, with the sum of $700,967, which is $623,982 plus $76,985, to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the water special reserve revenue fund for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. The Finance Committee motions to approve Article One as presented. The budget is attached at the end of the warrant handout. It is three pages, and the motion budget is $59,685,378. It's my understanding that the Finance Committee's budget and the Town Manager's budget are identical. Is there anything to be heard on the general, the budget itself, any general questions before we go through the pages? If not, what I'd like to do is ask if there's any questions on any of the line items on the first page. If not, we'll move to the second page. If not, we'll comment on the third page. If there are no questions, we'll then take a vote to approve the budget as presented. So, are there any questions on Page One, which basically has the general government section and the total public safety section? Sir, there's a question dead center in the middle, and Ms. Stark has a microphone for you. If you could rise and state your name and address?
Andrew Burbine, 30 Lantern Lane. On the Town Manager Office salaries and on the building salaries, the recommended, or the requested budget is less than what was recommended on both. Could you explain how that would happen, that what was being requested is actually less than what is being recommended on both those line items?
Moderator recognizes Town Manager Scott Lambieacy.
Yeah, on the Town Manager salary, as we got in further into the budget and into the process, we decided that we wanted to add some enhanced services and some, and another administrative level position at Town Hall. So, that's why there's an addition on that. As far as the Building Department salary, the Building Department, up until this town meeting, has had a revolving fund system. What we've done is we are recommending dissolving that, so all of the money actually goes into the general fund, and then all of the salaries that were being paid out of the revolving fund will now get paid out of this general fund.
So, it's not an actual increase in salaries. Okay. Any other questions on Article One, the budget on the first page? Thank you, Mr. Burbine. We'll turn to Page Two then. Are there any questions on Page Two, which includes education, highway and public works, human services, culture recreation, total debt service, total miscellaneous, and other total amounts to be provided? Are there any questions on any of the line items on Page Two of the budget? There being, oh, this gentleman, Andy, Mr. Burbine?
Same question on the Board of Health salaries. Scott, requested budget was less than what was actually being recommended.
Yeah, so, again, as everybody is aware, with what's been going on with the pandemic, we've had to keep extra staffing on. So, this actually, what we decided to do was keep funding for a public health nurse that we have at a full level. We expect that we're probably going to need that going through the rest of at least the calendar year, possibly into the next calendar year. We don't know what the requirements will be for vaccinations in the future. We hope that things will go back to normal, and we don't have to expend at all.
Thank you, Mr. Lambieacy. Any other questions or follow-up on, anything on Page Two of the budget? If not, if you could turn to Page Three, which is mostly for informational purposes regarding conservation, special revenue, cable revenue, golf revenue, sewer revenue, and water revenue. Are there any questions on anything on Page Three? There being none, we'll take a motion, we'll vote on the Finance Committee's motion to approve the budget of $59,685,378, as proposed by the detailed motion read by the Finance Committee, Matt Sala. All those in favor of approving the budget, please recognize, signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Please put your hands down. All those opposed, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Article One passes. Article Two is the funding of the capital plan to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, borrow, lease, purchase, or otherwise provide for the following capital items and all other costs incidental related thereto. There is a chart in your warrant, the handout. There are capital, proposed capital purchases for the Water Department, the Sewer Department, and the Strawberry Valley Golf Committee. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Two as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Two as presented in the warrant. Are there any questions regarding Article Two, the capital plan? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Two, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Articles Three. Articles Three through 10 are to be included in this year's consent agenda. The rather routine articles, either by type or annual nature of the articles, should be voted together in order to save time. If any voter prefer that any one of these articles be voted separately, the moderator will ask for a request prior to taking a vote on the consent agenda. So, Article Three is a sick leave buyback. Article Four is annual funding of student transportation to out-of-district students. Article Five and Six are funding for the health imperative and the arc of the South Shore. Article Seven is a matching grant, funding for hazard mitigation. Article Eight, a grant for the Mill Street dam repair. Article Nine is the establishment of a new revolving fund for stormwater management. And Article Ten, Mr. Lambieacy just briefly referenced it, the deletion of the Building Department revolving fund. This is a consent agenda. Mr. Sala has the motion from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee moves that Articles Three through 10 be combined into a consent agenda for the purposes of discussion and vote, and that said articles be approved as printed in the warrant, with funds to be raised and appropriated for Articles Four, Five, Six, Seven, and Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Are there any questions to be had on any of the articles, Articles Three through 10? Otherwise, we'll take one vote. Sir, gentleman in the front row in the rear section, the red shirt. If you could state your name and address once again, sir.
My name is Robert Pratt, 239 Walnut Street. On Article Four on student transportation, because everyone was studying at home, what happened to the money for student transportation from last year?
Moderator recognizes Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Peter Schaefer. Pete, if you could pull that microphone up towards you in whatever height you need.
Thank you. The, in the last school year, there was a prorated rebate for people, and then for this coming year, we had to contract the services for the full year in order to have the equipment available to us, knowing that we were in a year that was going to be all over the place, which it was. And hopefully, we never have to do that again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Anything else to be heard in any of the articles, Articles Three through 10? No? There'll be one vote then to approve the consent agenda as proposed in the motion put forth by Mr. Sala. All those in favor of approving Mr. Sala's motion, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. We move on to Article Eleven, the Community Preservation Budget. The Community Preservation Budget proposal is also printed in your warrant, the chart of the proposed funding, the different items, the Beaverbrook Playground Phase Two, Griffin Dairy Well, Little League Phase Two at Plymouth Street Field, and putting aside money for historical resources and affordable housing. The motion from the Finance Committee, Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Eleven as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Eleven as presented. Are there any questions on the Community Preservation Budget proposal? If not, all those, oh, sorry, there is a question by Mr. Franny, right here. The good-looking guy in the middle, turn right around. Are you coming up front? Moderator recognizes Michael Franny. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike Franny, 726 Washington Street. A couple of years ago, we allocated funds for, one was to study what type of weeds were in Island Grove, was approximately $6,000. And there was another one, approximately $30,000, to study the engineering aspects of the bridge. And both those studies are completed. And my question is, where do we go from here? We've addressed roughly $36,000, and it just seems like they're going to sit there and collect weed, collect dust. And another question I would have is on Griffin's Dairy Well for $25,000. Years ago, on Bank Street, I think the Water Department was there, and they used to have a faucet that people could drive up and to get their own water. And where this is well water, I, my question is, would the, would the general public be able to go up and fill their containers? When anything is done with wells in this town, it has to be, the Board of Health is in charge of it, and it has to be gone through, make sure the chemicals and everything is all right. So, it's good drinking water. And that would be my question, would the, would the public be able to go up similarly and fill their one-gallon containers? So, I don't know who would answer those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Franny. Hold on, Mr. Lapointe. We need to use a microphone for the people who are being, who are recording this. Joe, you can answer the question right from your seat. If you could identify yourself and your position?
Joe Lapointe, Superintendent of the Abbott and Rockland Joint Water Works. The town would have to get a license through DEP to give out, it'd be their own separate water source, so it wouldn't be fundable.
Would be, or wouldn't be?
Wouldn't be.
Would not be usable for drinkable water, potable water. Is that right?
Correct.
Unless they had a DEP license?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone, I think Mr. Hughes was here?
You'd have to have your own treatment plant there and everything else.
Mr. Franny, hold on one sec. Bruce Hughes from the Community Preservation, I think you're the chairman, Bruce. Can you answer the question? Mr. Franny broke, it's a little bit off topic, but it's from, funding from an earlier year about the algae in Island Grove and the bridge, was it, Mike? Is that the questions? Mr. Hughes, up back.
He had three questions.
Hold it right up to your mouth there, Bruce.
Sure. I sort of anticipated this. Being a planner, this is what I do. So, I'll go back to the Mill Foil or whatever the thing was in the Island Grove. I know that we, you know, we did the study for that. I think it's just a matter of implementing it. I'd have to go back and look at the individual article, but I think that was, you know, poor study. But I think the next step would be to, you know, apply for funding to get that done. The same with the bridge. I know the study was like $30,000, and I think we can assume that that bridge is going to cost a heck of a lot more than $30,000 to reconstruct. So, the studies have been done. I think it's just a matter of, you know, taking a look at the studies, see what the dollar amounts are to apply the weed aside, and also to do the bridge. And I really think it's going to take a town appropriation to fund the rebuilding of the bridge. I don't think we have enough money in the CPA to fund that. The other item that Mr. Franny talked about was the Griffin's Dairy Well. And, okay. So, the reason why the Griffin's Dairy Committee pushed this forward was, Dean, there is a distinct possibility that water to this area will be no longer provided by the Abington Rockland Water System, or working well is thus mandatory. Budget looking forward, additional walking trail to add another loop, which will terminate at the Plymouth Street parking area, possible playground, possible fitness trail, possible pavilion, possible restrooms. So, I guess it's more than just providing a well to irrigate the property. I think they're looking at, as you heard the Water Superintendent say, couldn't provide water to it. But I think, you know, looking forward, having restrooms and possibly a snack area or something like that. You really need to have potable water for that. So, I think that's what the Griffin's Dairy Committee is looking for, is to be able to have an independent water system for that site.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mr. Franny, can that answer your questions?
Yeah, just a suggestion. Bruce, if that be the case with Island Grove, a lot of money, is there any way we could start and save some money every year towards that bridge? I mean, that's a pretty popular place as far as I'm concerned. You can no longer fish in the pond. I mean, I used to smash my bobbys on the rocks, now the, now the weeds take it up. And, you know, I just strongly think that when I voted for that, I voted with Island Grove Pond in my conscience that we would be able to do something going forward. But I don't know what process you have to go through to save some funds towards that project, if it's even legal to do it. But if we could, I would suggest that. And the other thing, Joe, I don't want to cause an argument, but I just went to apply for a shallow well to water my lawn. And I did go through the process, and if you want to read a process, I once said when I was on the Board of Selectmen in this town, you have to get a permit before you can get a permit. You have to apply for it. It's just, but the thing was remarkable. I had, and I thanked the health inspector. All I wanted was to drill some holes, but even to apply for it the way it read, you had to get a civil engineer, place it where it was going to go. You had to notify your neighbors, and you also had to have it tested. neighbors, and you also had to have it tested. But it was listed as a private well. And a private well is drinkable water. So, I mean, I'm not going to argue with it, but it would seem to me if we're going to put water from that well into a snack bar, as previously stated, and it can be tested as a private well, that I, you know, DEP, I don't doubt it, but I also think that it certainly would benefit the people of this town if we could do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franny. Are there any other questions on the proposed community preservation budget as presented in the warrant? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article 11, the community preservation budget as presented, please signify by raising your hands. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hands. Majority passes, all but one. It passes. Article 11 passes. We'll move on to Article 12, the design of the new fire station. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, borrow, or otherwise provide the sum of $3.5 million for engineering, design, and project management costs and similar associated expenses for the first phase of a new fire station, anything incidental or related thereto, and/or authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute all documents and take any such actions as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote, or to take any other action relative thereto. We'll start with the motion from Mr. Sala and the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee moves that $3,500,000 be appropriated for engineering, design, and project management costs, and similar associated expenses for the first phase of a new fire station. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer will, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $3,500,000 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to execute all documents and take such actions as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of insurance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve this article and to fund it by borrowing the requested $3.5 million under the authority of the Selectmen and the town treasurer. What I'd like to do is I'm going to recognize the fire chief, Mr. John Nuttall, who's going to give you a brief introduction into this proposal. And then when Chief Nuttall determines, he'd like to introduce the chairman of his fire station building committee. And we have a few slides that they prepared for us that we'd like to walk through. So Chief Nuttall, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Sean. We know that there are a lot of questions and concerns over this article, and the larger project which this article is the genesis of, or hopefully could be the genesis of, which would be a new fire station. Questions like, why do we, are we asking for a new fire station? Why is it so large? Why is it so expensive? Why did we not do this when we built the police station? Why did we not add this next to the police station? Why are some towns building their fire stations reportedly a lot cheaper than this? Why did we choose these locations? What's up with these two locations? We get it. We know that there is a lot of questions, and we're hoping to answer all of those questions tonight. I don't think everybody's going to be happy, either from the fireside or the residents, which I am also a resident, but it is a conversation that this community has to have. One of the other pertinent questions, and it's an excellent question, is why are we doing this now, in the middle of what we're just coming out of? Excellent questions, all of them. We're hoping to answer them. Ironically, one of the mechanisms we need to finally answer everything is this warrant article itself, because this is to further the feasibility study that we did two years ago. We were not able to present last year because of the pandemic. It was done prior to the pandemic. That was to give us some ideas and concepts. This is to either prove or disprove some of these locations and some of the other concepts and ideas that we had. As Derek Hamadi, if you want to make your way up, I want to turn this over to the chairman of the Fire Station Building Committee, Feasibility Study Building Committee. And just keep in mind again that Headquarters Fire Station was built during the Johnson administration, has been staffed nonstop since that time. That was technology used during the Mercury missions, and we're still doing that. Station two was built during the Nixon administration. That's been staffed mainly, there was a few sporadic times when it was not. Buildings are tired. We have outgrown the buildings. The town of Abington has grown exponentially since the Johnson administration, and it continues to grow, and it continues to, it is going to grow, unknown with what's going on in Southfield. Our mission has grown. The only thing that has not grown is the square footage in either building. In fact, if anything, we've shrunk that down by trying to fit modern technology needs into these buildings, as well as the apparatuses larger and everything. On that, Derek, can I hand this over to you to begin answering some of these questions? And I'm sure there's going to be many more that you have as well, and we're trying to get all these out to you tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Moderator recognizes Mr. Derek Hamadi. Derek, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Derek Hamadi, 151 Cynthia Road. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I know there's a lot of questions, like the chief said. I'm going to try to go through this presentation to try to answer some of those questions, and then afterward, love to hear from you guys. Sorry. Is that better? All right. Thank you. All right. So there's going to be a lot of questions. We're going to try to answer them all. The biggest thing is there's a lot of misinformation out there with what's been spread around, and I want to just fix all that right now. First, if you guys didn't hear, I'm Derek Hamadi. I'm the chairman of the Fire Station Building Committee. This committee was made up over a year and a half ago. There's five members on it. Along with myself, there's Wendy Happel, Jared Rascal, Roger Bodie, and Jim Dobrowski, two firefighters, three residents. All of us are residents, but two of us were firefighters. We worked together with the company KBA, Kesselbooz. They're the ones that were chosen to do the feasibility study. This feasibility study is just that. It's just to see what was feasible and what wasn't. So essentially, what they did was they looked at the existing conditions of the station that we had, and they did a full detailed analysis of what they had, and if there was any sense in trying to rehab or renovate what we had. They went on into the study to find that the best thing that would be for our town would be to combine both stations and do a centralized fire station that would house all the apparatus, all the members of the department, and make our response times better for the whole town. For this slide here, this shows the initial section of the response study. Everybody see my pointer? So up here, this is 171 Adams Street. This is where the North School is. Right down here is Glenowitz Way site. They're calling it Zero Bedford Street. Both sites had great response times. They're very adequate. They're better than what we have currently. The study showed that between the two, the Glenowitz Way site was the most centrally located and was able to reach all the corners of the town equally. That was one of the factors that the committee took into consideration when we got to this The other site that was checked out through the feasibility study was 500 Brockton Ave. This was the only other sizable location where a potential fire station could fit. We ultimately kind of crossed that one off when we got to it, because it's just so far out of the way, it didn't make much sense for us. The two current stations on Route 18 and on Rockland Street are both equally spread out, but by doing a centralized location, we were able to fix the response time issues that we were having. The next slide's going to show, these are some of the current conditions that we have in our stations. As the chief said, we've just simply outgrown these buildings. Everything that has changed in the past 50 or 60 years, all this new fire technology has just gotten larger. And we just need to, we're running out of space. Every single room in both of these buildings is used for multiple uses. We're outside of all the modern fire codes. We're outside of all the standard operating, working conditions. We use shared space. We have one public bathroom. We have one bathroom facility for all of our firefighters, including our female firefighters and female staff. Fifty, sixty years ago, the fire service was a male-based career. That's not the case anymore. We have no way to house the rest of our employees, and there's no separate facilities for them to use. Our boiler room, which has been retrofitted and renovated slightly, has several different uses inside of it. We use it for storage. We use it for the boiler room. We use it for our janitorial supplies. And this is also our radio alarm supervisor's office. That's where all of his equipment is stored. This is our mechanics bench, and back here is a, this is a larger view of our gear that's stored up along the side of the apparatus bay, which is, that leaves less than two feet of clearance for us to even get our gear set up. This is something that, in a modern fire station, is set up in a positive pressure room that keeps all the carcinogens and all the nasty things that we get on our gear separate from where we are day to day. This being out on the apparatus floor, all it does is just absorb more diesel fumes and other carcinogens. It doesn't get a chance to really get cleaned, especially after we decon it after an issue. The next slide, please. So these next couple of slides are going to just show the conceptual renderings that KBA came up with in the study. So the first thing is that this study was just that. It just did a space needs program and showed what the department really needs, and then they kind of just pieced it together for us. This isn't how it's going to look. It's going to change. After a feasibility study, typically, they take whatever that study says, come to town, ask for the whole amount, and then get to work in construction, and then they start piecing it together. But we're trying to slow that process down. We're trying to do this the right way for what's best for the town of Abington. We want to make sure that when we come back with this, after this second phase, we'll have exact figures, exact diagrams, exact engineering. Everything's going to be done, so when we present it, all the answers will be there for you. So this just shows what our fire department would need for an apparatus floor, for a training facility. This would show our, this is the most important part of one of the new modern fire stations. This is something that we drastically need. This is something that's going to keep us safe and keep us from getting cancer. All these nasty carcinogens and everything that we get when we go out to a call and we come back into the station, there should be a decon process to go through. This is something that we need to be able to go through and decon our equipment, decon our gear, take showers, re-gear up, and come back out into a clean area. Right now, in our current station, this door goes right into the day room, standby room, our ready room, our training room. It's got a lot of names, because we use it for a lot of different things. There's no barrier between us. Over here is what would potentially be our gear storage, positive pressure room. So everything that's on our gear would stay out into the apparatus bay, it wouldn't come into us. There'd be an administrative section, and this was one of the original renderings that we did. This is not the one that actually ended up into the study, into our recommendation to the town, because this one also had the Health Department and the Building Department added on. We originally thought that was a good idea, because we wanted to be able to bring some of the departments in the town and join us, because we work hand in hand with both those departments, especially after this last year through the pandemic with the Health Department. It's almost a necessity that they work with us, but because of the cost, we saw that, and we chose one of the lower-cost options, so we actually cut that piece off for now. But this is just a general layout. This is definitely not how it's going to end up being. This just needs to be refined and set up, but we can't do that until we get to this next step. The next slide, please. This would just be the second floor. This is just going to show crew quarters, separate bunk areas that are still group bunk areas, but at least separates the male and female bunk areas, individual showers. These are all things that are pretty standard in almost any building you go into. But if you come into our building, we have to share those same spaces. The next slide, please. So this rendering is just that layout, superimposed over the North School lot. So the first thing you can notice is that the building takes up the entire space. Essentially, land locks us right in. The reason that this site wasn't highly considered and wasn't voted on through our committee was because there's no potential room for growth. There's really not a lot of room for parking. There's no room for training. We're essentially doing what we have now inside our building and doing it to the outside of this. As soon as we do this, we have no room to grow. I don't think that that would be an appropriate step to put something there that is going to hinder us in the future. The other major issues with this section is going to be the intersections. There are four major intersections here at Plymouth and Adams, Plymouth and 139, Birch and Plymouth, Adams and Birch, and even Washington and Adams. They're all major intersections that can cause pretty substantial issues. The study and engineering for traffic engineering, that didn't get done in the feasibility study. It's not supposed to. That comes in this next step. So the next phase, we'll be able to find out and determine how much it would cost to renovate and adjust those intersections, because if we were to put a building there, and it's not impossible, we would have to definitely take a look at those intersections. That's going to cause a lot of issues. The study also pointed out that 48% of all the responses go down this intersection, Adams to Washington. So we would have to find a way to make Adams and Washington a better intersection, because as you all know, that is a tough intersection. But 48% of the runs from the response study showed that we would be going down that way. Next slide. This is the Glenowitz Way site, superimposed picture. The first thing you notice is just, it's almost twice as much land. This is just over six acres of land. When we first started the feasibility study, they said they're going to try to find anything that has four to four and a half acres or higher, because that's the minimum that they try to work with, where the North School site was just over three acres. This site here gives us plenty of room to put down a station, have parking, have room for training, and of course, we know that there's challenges, there's challenges with both locations, that there was only one egress out of here. We know that this is a major concern. It's not something that we don't know, but we can't do any more until we get to this next step. We need the engineering plans, we need the studies to find a secondary egress, that we have to have a second road. It would have to be done to do this, but we can, in the interim, the first initial thoughts were that we can definitely control the light system and get our way out of here. We already control the lights on Route 18 as it is, and now going across a four-lane highway, I can tell you that it has gotten substantially more difficult to do that than it used to when it was only two lanes. But being able to control these lights would not be something that we couldn't handle. We also had some initial thoughts of putting a secondary road out this way, or what would most likely be the cheapest option would be to probably put a small easement right along here out to Thayer Street. All of those things, we can't determine until we get to the next step. The next phase is how we answer all these questions. Next slide, please. This was just a conceptual rendering of what that particular building would look on the outside. This was just more of an aesthetic thing. When we come back the next time, if we have the opportunity to do so, we'll have a more laid-out floor plan that will fit on the sites with all the engineering and plans, and we'll have a different rendering for the outside. Next slide, please. So this is the breakdown of what we're asking for. So the total cost of the project would be just over $30 million, and what we're looking for today is $3.5 million. This right here would get us all the architect and engineering fees, and also allow us to hire an owner's project manager. If this gets approved, that's going to be the next step, is to get somebody to come on that's going to advocate for us and for the town, work with us, work with KBA, and help us, guide us through this next process, because this next process is a tough one. Essentially, what we're going to do is start with schematic design and design development. That's essentially rebuilding the whole building as we already did. We know the rooms that we need. We just need to find a better way to put them together and make that flow work, make it work for how we operate. It's going to redesign the building. It's going to change the shape, most likely. It could change the height. It could go up another story. All those things can change, but we won't know that until we get to that next step. Oh, you can go back. This would also include prequalifications, construction documents, and bidding. This process takes a long time. So the reason that we wanted to slow this down and ask for all these things now is because if we had the time to work and get these design developments ready, and we went out and did prequels and got ready for bidding, we would be ready to go for construction. So when we came back, if we were able to come back next year and say, this is exactly what the building's going to cost, we'd be able to do exact figures and find out exactly what the taxes would be. Once we could do that, we'd be able to say, okay, if you approve what we have here, we can get right to work, and there wouldn't be any time lapse, because the longer we wait to do this, the more expensive it's going to be. At some point, we're going to have to build a new fire station. It's inevitable. It's inevitable. But if we don't do it now, it's just going to continue to get more expensive. This is something that probably should have been done 20 years ago, because these buildings are 50 and 60 years old. But here we are, and I, it's like the chief said, we know that this isn't the greatest time to do this, but if we keep waiting, it's just going to get more and more expensive. I also wanted to take the opportunity to introduce Sean Schmiegel and Todd Costa. They're the representatives from KBA. I'd like to be able to invite them down at some point if they could answer any questions along with me and the chief. If that's okay through the moderator?
If a question comes up that you think you might need their assistance, we'd be more than happy. Thank you, Mr., go ahead, Mr. Murray, keep, continue.
Oh, so that, that's all I have. I would like to start answering some questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mr. Hamadi. What I'd like to do is try to take some questions. We'll try to get some different faces after different questions. Again, the ushers will bring the microphone to you. If you could stand, state your name and your address and ask your question, we'll try to get the appropriate person to answer it for you. So, I saw a couple of hands. This gentleman right here, Mr. Wakeland, if you could pass the microphone, if you'd name an address?
Larry Melchel, 121 Thayer Street. I actually have two questions. We were told that they were going to be taking over the, the wetlands behind our complex and that you were going to be within 100 feet of our living space. Can you verify that or deny it, or what?
So the question is that we were going to be 100 feet behind your, behind your buildings?
Behind Thayer Street. The 100, the 100 block.
Matt, could you put the slide back to the Glenowich Way plan, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So where this building is, you're saying that this would only be 100 feet?
Well, I said, we were told, number one, you were going to be taking the wetlands and that you were going to be within 100 feet of our building.
So the initial, so the, the reason that this, this building is laid out like this is because the wetland delineation map that, that they were able to get from the state already showed that where this is wouldn't affect any wetlands at all. But this next process, if we can get to the next step of engineering, that would go into all that next conservation stuff. It'd still have to go through, there's a long process of, of checking all that out. But just the way that they laid this out here, it, it shouldn't affect any wetlands as it is pictured here. As far as the distance, that's, I don't know the distance, but I'm sure that there's got to be some sort of space that we have to, there's got to be a, a buffer between zoning barriers, between lots where we can actually be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt?
Robert Pratt, 239 Walnut Street. The way they have the exits from the fire station, that's going to be right in front of the high school and the middle school. What happens if there's going to, what happens if there is a, an emergency when those kids are coming out of school or going into school? And second, and let me preface this, I have nothing but the utmost respect for the members of the Abington Fire Department. The EMT saved my son's life this year. I want to, I don't want to embarrass them, but they, they saved my son's life during a critical time, and I can never fully thank them for everything they did for me. Has anyone looked at the Frollo School site to, to see if that is big enough? It's away from the schools, it's on a, it's on a main drag, it's right across the street from Lincoln Boulevard if you need to get out that way, and it's straight up Washington Street if you need to go that way. I don't know if there was any feasibility studies made for that area also.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt, Mr. Hamadi.
Thank you. So initially, let's start with the Frollo School. That was brought up at the very beginning of this process as one of the sites that were, that KBA, essentially KBA, and I'm hoping that they'll be able to answer this question a little bit better than I can, but their job essentially is to go through and find every single spot that a, a building can go in town. Every town-owned property, anything that's larger than their minimum requirements that they needed to do. And the Frollo was discussed, but it was a town-owned property that was still being used, so that's why it wasn't considered for a, a lot.
Mr. Pratt has a brief follow-up.
Yes, sir. Why can't the superintendent of schools be moved back to the North School where it was before? And then, then the, the Frollo School will be thinking again?
I honestly, I don't have an answer for that question, because ultimately, the, the responsibility of the committee was to take the feasibility study and, and study it and come up with the recommendations based off of it. Maybe the chief can answer that a little bit better than I can.
Moderator recognizes Chief John Nuttall of the Abington Fire Rescue.
Well, excellent questions, really. First of all, the Frollo is not available, and even if it was, the land is not large enough, that we still use the field. As Derek said, we're looking, these sites are looking at three to four acres, and I know that sounds unbelievable until you see the size of the footprint of some of these buildings. You know, we, we shared some of the other recent projects in the Plymouth and Norfolk County areas that were built in the last 10 years, and they're actually larger than this. Modern apparatus just needs more room to go, so the, the Frollo is really just not feasible. Your first question was, how do we control the traffic getting out of here? And I agree with you, that's one of my concerns as well. And there's, there's several options on that. The ideal option is, is a road, a dedicated road, either to be used by us all the time or when, we all know how Glenowich Way just completely clogs up several times a day, even if we just use it then or a combination. Another way to do it quickly, and I don't really like relying on technology, however, this, this theoretically would work, is we control the lights and we basically flush out Glenowich Way as we're getting ready to respond. Everybody gets a, a red light except for Glenowich Way that will get the green, everything dumps out, and we just go raft it out. By the time we're in the, in the apparatus dressed, geared up, and ready to go, it should be cleared out. These, again, are all of the studies that would be in-depth on that traffic study, should this portion of the article be funded tonight.
Thank you, Chief Nuttall. Any other questions or discussions to be heard? There's two questions right up here. Kath, this woman right here with the, yes, with a hand raised, and then Steve, the woman behind, will be next up. If you could rise and state your name and address, please.
Hi, Kristiana Pfeiffer, 43 Bicknell Hill. With consolidating resources to this one site, have you done an assessment on how this is going to impact your operating expenses each year?
The expenses, no, but for operations, it would improve it drastically by having all of the firefighters in one physical building. That gives us a lot more flexibility with staffing, equipment. Depending on how a call comes in, whether we take an engine, a ladder, an ambulance, the boat at times, a forest fire truck, if everybody's in the same building, that would greatly enhance how we're able to operate. As for the actual, the cost, we'd be taking two older buildings, combining it into one. The study didn't really include an operational cost, however, after talking to all of the, the chiefs that have gone through this, or, you know, the communities that have gone through this over the last 10 years, that the energy costs have been cut drastically. It's just newer technology, it's a much tighter building. I, I can't give you a direct answer on that, but if, if anything, I'm, I'm hoping it will be a wash, if not a savings.
If we were to move forward, would that be part of this process to present to the town how the operating expenses have changed?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If we were to move forward, would that be part of this process to at some point bring back to the town how the operational expenses has changed due to this? Whether it's been reduced because you can consolidate resources?
I don't know if this is in the study. The, I don't believe that the, a cost that, an operational cost analysis with the energy isn't. I, I don't think it would be a drastic rise in the cost, to be honest with you, for the reasons I stated.
Mm-hmm.
And we would be closing both current fire stations. The, the goal of this is not to have three fire stations, it would be to close north and center, you know, Station One and Station Two, consolidate everything into these, and then at that point, those two properties could be deemed surplus, sold, or what have you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hamadi just wants to follow up, I believe, with a note of information.
So the, the feasibility study did actually have a section, it has nothing to do with cost, though. That's, that's something that ultimately falls back on the town, but as far as the operations would go, the response study was done by another third-party company, and what that actually said was by consolidating both we, both of our stations into one, it would drastically increase our response times, it would make the operation flow, because what a lot of people might not know is that we cross-staff apparatus, because we only have six-man shifts, and we have a lot of different apparatus. So we, we actually work on multiple apparatus a day, depending on what the call is. So by having all of the people in the same building with all the same, with all of our equipment, it would just make us a, a better fire department. But as far as the costs go, that's not something that, that the, the study would talk about. And even this next section wouldn't be, that's something that the town's ultimately going to have to see how things go.
Thank you, Mr. Hamadi. The young lady in the back of the center here?
Cindy Whiting, 100 Colonel Hunt Drive. Quick question, I know that there were slides that were put up on other towns that have, I guess, within the last, I think you said 10 years or so, and I know costs have gone up. Can you give us an idea as to how much of those cost when they put them up? And I think a couple of them were actually police and fire together, and we had a local town, was it Randolph maybe, that just put one up, what the cost of that was? And I'm seeing like Braintree is looking at 14 million, Quincy maybe 20 million, and why ours is so much more than maybe some of the others?
I'm just getting my notes, because I want to share an email, quick email.
Chief Nuttall, I guess, just to summarize, I believe Ms. Whiting's question is comparison of other costs from other towns and other buildings, similar buildings, right?
Speaking to the Carver chief, his gas bill went down, I think you said about 70%? Again, because they had a more efficient building.
One second, chief. Are you asking construction costs?
Construction costs. Why is ours so much more than some other towns and cities? I'm just curious as to how this compares, that we've come up with 30 million with, maybe we could sharpen our pencil a little bit, still have everything that the fire department needs, because God knows they need, you know, to be safe and, and, and they deserve to have something that's more modern and, but it just seems like a, a big number that's just being thrown out there, and it's like, are there other options?
Yeah, I had, there's a couple of costs I can do off the top of my head, and there's two I specifically I want to share here, because I know they were posted over the weekend on social media that looked drastically skewed. The town of Hingham right now is going through a new police station with an additional sub-fire station. This is not a headquarters fire station. $40 million. So we're, that's the ballpark we're in. The town of Avon, Avon is much smaller police and fire departments in terms of staffing and equipment and volume. I spoke to the Avon fire chief yesterday on this, because I know that they're going through several changes with, with their town and how they're doing it. First of all, they built a new police station. That initially was a combined police-fire station. They moved the police out of that building, they're getting a brand-new building, and now they're doing a renovation of the existing building and they're adding a, a large storage shed behind that for their apparatus. Avon for years has been storing apparatus outside and in an old lumberyard. Chief Spurrough from Avon said their total cost was 11.5 million, 6 million for the police, five and a half for the fire. Quote, "There is no way to do this job now for that price. We could not have done our renovation without moving the police department." They're a little unique. Braintree, I know that we've heard a lot, Braintree is much better, much larger than us, we're being reminded of that, they're doing a much better job, they're going to build a brand-new headquarters for 12 to 14 million dollars. I'm, I'm interested, because if we're doing something wrong, I want to know. So I reached out to the Braintree fire chief. This is his response, I won't read the entire thing, but, "Hi, chief, we're in the design phase of a headquarters renovation, not a new building. The estimate we are at right now is 12.1 million, which would rehab remodel the entire second-floor living quarters and administration areas only. It would also remodel our first gear, first-floor gear room and dispatch room and provide us with a decon room. This price does not include any work to the apparatus floor or the exterior of the building, which is an eyesore. It does, however, include raising two one-level garages and rebuilding them to two stories each, which would give them an additional 3,000 square feet of space to work with. It's the only way they could add space, as their footprint is sided by two roads and historical buildings." Again, this is him. "I've been working on this for eight years, we have been through three feasibility studies, this is the most progress I've made to date, I'm still waiting on final approval of funding. From everything I've looked at, along with my limited knowledge of construction costs, $30 million seems like a decent price to build a headquarters facility." And then again, what architecture firm they're using. So Braintree is not building a new building, they're rehabbing an old building, and they're still going to have a lot of the same problems. They're not even touching their apparatus floor. They don't run an ambulance, so they save some room there. So I know that there's been a lot of misinformation that's been posted out there, and, and we're trying to give you the right cost. Some of the other buildings that were built in the last five to 10 years, they were cheaper, because the overall construction costs have reduced. I'm going to rely on KBA in a moment, if they're able to speak, to speak on just the rapid rise in cost of construction cost, and that is, there's a dollar figure per square foot in the building, and they're going up a certain percentage a year. All you have to do is drive through Boston, and you see all of the cranes and the construction, that is why. Because nobody wants to work in municipal buildings, because they're making a mint right now in Boston, there's, there's more work to be, to be had. Most people don't really like working with municipalities because of all of the, the controls and, and issues they have to deal with. So the overall construction costs are up. That is the main reason we're presenting this now. We know the economy's uncertain, we get it. The longer we wait, the more this project is going to go up. We should have built this 20 years ago, we couldn't afford it, we know. If we hold off and we wait five years, 10 years, in this exact same project, now is $42 million or whatever, you're going to say to me, rightfully so, why didn't you give us the chance 10 years ago when it was only 30? And I'm not saying only 30, I know 30 million is a lot of money. We get it, and you heard, I kind of tipped my hand earlier tonight, I am going to actively seek any other potential funding sources that don't even exist right now, but they should. That's a home, that, that's a gamble, and I can't stand here and promise you we're going to get the Biden administration to pay for a fire station, but I am going to try.
Thank you, chief. Want to kind of keep moving things along? Ms. Whiting, do you have a quick follow-up?
Question, so if we vote this 3.5 million today, and I don't know if this is kind of like, we're back-ending it around, because it seems, I, I wondered whether when we did the school, did we do it this way too? And we voted a piece to do this, all of the shovel-ready, so that as soon as the town voted for the school, they were ready to rock and roll? Or did we do it a different way around and vote for the school first and then vote the money in? That was one question. And if we vote this now, and then a year from now, it goes into the ballot or on the town floor, and we say no, and the whole town, there's only 118 or 20 of us here, the whole rest of the town votes no, what happens to that 3-point-something million dollars? We're out, how much of that? And we got nothing to show for it?
Moderator recognizes Mr. Hamadi.
So the first question was, I don't know how the school went about their process, but as far as how the typical public safety building goes, and I know KBA could talk about this a little better than I can, but essentially, when they do a feasibility study, they typically come back with a ballpark idea number, which, which is what we have now, and then they go to town meeting and they, they, they push to get approved for that total amount. The downside to that is you don't know what's going to change. Like you said, to sharpen the pencil, we need to get to the next step to do the actual schematic designs to figure out how the building's going to come together. By finishing that process, we're going to have an exact figure. It won't be a ballpark, which means whatever we ask for, that is exactly what it's going to be. There won't be any wiggle room whatsoever. So the reason we're going about it this way is so we can come back with exact figures and, and try to figure out a way to, to put the building together that's going to work for the town.
So this 3884, let's just say $31 million, could go up?
I, I'm not trying to put two of my department heads on, on the, on the floor here, however, I, I'm not sure how the schools did it. I believe the police, when they built the police station, it was one set dollar figure, and then the building itself shrank to fit that. I think that's how you did it, I'm not sure. Mr. Schaefer, would you be able to speak on that?
Moderator recognizes Superintendent Schools Peter Schaefer to briefly respond to this point, and then I'm going to recognize Mr. Keo over here for a question.
Peter Schaefer, School Superintendent. We were required to do a feasibility study first, so that we could get the details nailed down just as best as possible prior to bringing it back to the community with those details, so the community could vote the project.
Moderator recognizes Mr. Sala for a quick point.
A quick answer to your, to your question, Cindy. That was one of the questions the Finance Committee asked about the 3.5 million, how much of it is being spent regardless of the vote, and how much would go through the project? The amount that would be spent before a final vote on the total project is approximately 2.4 million. So there's about 1.1 million that would not be spent if there was a no vote on the overall project.
Moderator recognizes Mr. Larry Keo. Name and address, please, Mr. Keo.
Lawrence Keo, 80's Battery Street. As a point of information, Mr. Moderator, if this passes tonight, I noticed it has to pass by a two-thirds vote. Do we then have to go to an override vote to get this money?
No, there isn't a ballot election for this. This is a town meeting decision whether to borrow, authorize the borrowing of the money.
So it's different than what the school was in that we had to go, we only had to go to get the final dollar amount?
This process tonight is just authorizing the selectmen in the town to borrow the, up This process tonight is just authorizing the selectmen in the town to borrow the, up to 3.5 million. I'm looking at the town treasurer, and she's nodding yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If, if eventually we would go for the entire building, at that point, I believe that would be a vote at town meeting followed up by a ballot vote at that point, I think.
That's correct.
Because that would be outside the level limits to pay for it, per the town manager.
We're going to make that lady, hold on a second. Wait. Anybody else over here? Okay, my mother. Go ahead.
You're in trouble, Sean.
Please state your name and address.
Ann Riley, 262 Adam Street, Abington, Mass. Apartment 2. As a former selectman, in 1997, we did a study of the police station, and we voted, but it didn't pass a town meeting, to have one central building on Lincoln Boulevard. Had we done that more than 20 years ago, we wouldn't be in this situation now. But this is what we need. We had figured out then we were going to save so much money by having one central location, and we wouldn't have to duplicate everything that we have at the two stations. So, I really think that this is a time that we need to move ahead. 1997 is how many years ago? We need to move it now.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Just to clarify, don't encourage her, don't encourage her. 1997, she meant to say they did a fire station study. You said police by mistake, but I look, just want to correct you because you've done it for me for 50 years. All right. Any other questions? Do you have a person in the back?
Amanda Zompetti, 50 Pilgrim Street. The, I fully support this, 100%. When it comes to the anticipated cost of 30 million going into the feasibility, we're looking at building roads, new lights, wetlands, bringing into Thayer Street. Is that, is this like the upper thought of this budget when there's so much unknowns, particularly when you look at environments and everything else?
Again, this is what this study would come up with, so that we will know those answers. We have some initial ideas what that would be, but until, we actually do test boring to see what's up there. We do the traffic study. That's when we're going to get the final figures to know. And again, at that point, that will be a separate vote.
Okay.
So, there's also some, in the feasibility study breakdown, for the total cost, there's actually some line items of, of unknown costs built in. So, that's part of this. So, it is in there, but there's no way to know the exact figure until we do the engineering and, and design portion. So, we, we have to get to this next step to be able to answer that 100%. But the feasibility study does put in buffer areas to, to handle those, but there's no way to know for sure. So, I hope that answers it.
Thank you, Mr. Hamadi. Any other questions? Is Mr. Burbine, is there a microphone? Oh, it's right there.
Andrew Burbine, 30 Lantern Lane. So, is this going to decide, will this be on Glenwood's Way? Is that what we're going to do here? Or are we, is this feasibility study going to still look at other possible places to put this fire station?
So, the, when the committee met, our committee, the Fire Station Building Committee met, the task was to, to go through the study and decide if we should go for a central station, and if so, out of the two locations that were highlighted, which one. We recommended the Glenwood's Way because in our opinion, it, it worked out to be the best out of the two locations that were given to us. After we get through this next step, it's going to answer a lot more questions. Once they do the engineering of, of both the lands, the Glenwood's Way site, the traffic areas around North School, we'll have a better idea. But as far as a recommendation goes, we, we did recommend the Glenwood's Way site. The only way to prove or disprove either of these sites is to get to that next step. And at that point, it's going to be a, a decision on the town because we recommended it to the selectmen and the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Hamadi. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Burbine.
Just to be clear, so you're going to look at both sites, not just, not just the Glenwood's Way?
Yeah, there's going to be, so this next step is going to have, majority of the stuff is for the site that we recommended because that's, that's the, the better of the two sites. But there still needs to be traffic studies done just to rule out all the options on both sides.
Thank you, Mr. Hamadi. Do you have a question? Please state your name and address. Now, it's my wife.
Kathy Riley, 271 Dorsey Street. My, to address sort of the next stage, if you do this, I think it should be made clear to people, and you can confirm it, that the public is going to have the ability to weigh in at multiple points as while you're developing the design. It's not just going to go through this one committee, but the, at different stages, say if you decide to make a different road, or, you know, if, if every parent in Abington doesn't want it going down Glenwood's Way with their kids in school, then that's something that the designers and the committee will listen to.
Yes. In our discussions with the Board of Selectmen a couple of weeks ago on this, as well as the town manager, we agreed that either an additional or a new building committee would be formed or, or to add to that, to really kind of, to make that committee a little bit larger. But the first committee, excuse me, the first committee, the feasibility study, we, we kept that fairly small and manageable. As this is growing, we think that committee should be a little larger, get a larger cross-section of the community in this as well. To, to answer a lot of your points, to, because, because we don't want this to be just our people, you know, thinking how it should be. We really want to get more ideas and opinions on this as well. And with that, we believe we'd be opening up to Board of Selectmen. They would be the ones who would be appointing that, should this go through tonight. If for some reason this does not pass tonight, we're dead in the water on this, which we hope not to do. We would pretty much be coming back at a future town meeting, and I guess starting all over with, and now we're getting slower and the construction costs are going up. I'm just, just so people know, you know, vote how you want. I'm not trying to tell you how to vote, but there is really no plan B on this. There is no more money to do any more studies if this does not go through tonight. We, at that point, I think, would be coming back to begin this entire process over again, probably to find the same things unless there's some large parcel of land that comes up for sale by then. We have tried. The town manager has tried. We've queried a lot. Within the, the certain narrow corridor, basically Route 18 between 139 and 23, that's kind of the sweet spot for a central station due to the responses or thereabouts. There really isn't much land available in this town that would even be available for that. Like Derek said, we looked at different parcels around town, but, so we're hoping we can at least keep this moving forward tonight with this vote.
Thank you, Chief Nodell. And honey, that was a wonderful question. Well done. Any other questions? A woman in the front row of the back section, and then this gentleman right here. Kath, there's a gentleman right here in the middle that will be up next. Go ahead, please.
Jean Matiosis, 32 Nile Street, Abington, Mass. Just to clarify, so Plan A after the feasibility study would be the Glenwood's Way site. So, if that doesn't meet all the criteria for wetlands and buildable, you know, if it's four acres of land, how much of it is buildable, the traffic, the access roads, what's the Plan B? North School site?
Unfortunately, I mean, yes, the, the short answer is yes. There's just no other lots at all in town to use. And, and we, there's been over a year of trying to find any other location because it was quick, we were quick to see that, you know, half the town split on, on both sides of this. And we understand, we've even done, the, the town manager's done his due diligence, and we've tried reaching out to find any other lot that would possibly work. So, those are the only two options that we have.
Okay. So, up by the North School site, there is the big old empty New England lot. Is there any way that they would dedicate any of, the owner would dedicate any of that for access for, or storage for any of the vehicles? I mean, I'm, I know we need a new fire station. I mean, my next-door neighbor used to be a call fireman many, many years ago. So, I mean, I remember when the fire station on 18 was built, and it's just that 30 million is a lot of money, but I know we have to lock in a price. I'm just concerned about, you know, the sites.
And I understand that. And I've done everything I possibly can to, to try to, to give you guys more answers. But at the end of the day, the feasibility study came out, and it showed all the potential locations. That's all there is in this town. I wish we could have a, a perfect location that would, that would meet all the criteria in the world, but we only have these two to pick from. And out of those two, we chose the one that is going to do the best for us. But if that site, for whatever reason, doesn't turn out, we only have one other option. Unless something miraculous happens and, and a new six-acre square lot shows up somewhere in the center of town that's going to work great for us, we don't have any other choices.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Hamadi. Just trying to move things along. Gentleman right there with the microphone. Please.
Hi, Mike, where's, oh, 43 Bicknell Road. I'm just curious, with this plan, you were mentioning like, the stations are pretty old and Nixon administration, things like this. How long do you anticipate that this new fire station going future-wise would service us in this town?
That's a great question. So, the, the thought process behind this is the stations that we're in have, have made us, they got us by the past 50, 60 years. This station would easily get us 50 years at least, only because it's going to be designed to house all the apparatus that we have. It, it has enough room for us to grow. As the, the town grows and develops and more people come into it, the department's going to grow along with that. And, and we anticipate that because when these stations were built, that wasn't really thought out that well, and we're in the situation that we are now. We're putting a lot of that thought into it now.
Thank you, Mr. Hamadi. Chief?
This is where the chief comes in. 75 to 100 years, that's the anticipated length of service we'd like. Our children and grandchildren are going to be in these buildings, and I'm actually very serious about that. We actually have a, a new firefighter that his grandfather was a Rockland Deputy Chief who used to cover our station too. We literally have grandchildren in these buildings now that we're housing. So, we, we are serious when we say our children and grandchildren, if not great-grandchildren, are going to be working in these buildings. When Station 1 and Station 2 were built prior to my time, sort of, from what I understand, they were both cut back drastically from how it was supposed to be. And this is coming from some of my senior offices that I used to work with. Station 1 was supposed to be much larger. There was supposed to be a bay underneath, and everything happened. Station 2 was just a disaster from day one. It was built on the cheap, and we still have them. And there's, with the exception of maintaining what we've had to do, they have extremely well-earned their, their money's worth. We've, we've got a lot of life out of them. So, your question, I'm, I would anticipate 50 to 100, 75 to 100 years out of these buildings.
Thank you, Chief Nodell. Is there anything else to be heard on the matter? Mr. Franey. All right, come on forward, Mr. Franey.
Thank you. I, I absolutely agree that we need a new firehouse. However, my God is telling me right now, this could be a pirate victory. We could go out of here tonight thinking it was solved, and when it gets to the ballot box, it's down. And I spoke at the last town meeting, I haven't been on the, the School Building Committee. We kind of answered all the what-ifs you add on to the center school. What if you demo the North School and put something on the Woodsdale? So, we had an answer. So, I have always wanted to answer why we didn't have a central police and fire. And my question is, when I first got involved in town politics back in the late 80s and 90s, we had the town highway buildings that were in deplorable condition. And my question would be, would it be possible to put the firehouse where those buildings are now? They're space metal buildings. I, I don't know what the cost is. I don't pretend to know. But could we move the highway department to an area, say the North School, for instance, and put the fire department there? And one thing I noticed, Derek, I truly appreciate all the work these people have done, but one of the things was a half a million dollars for an antenna. And this police station has an antenna, which I assume you could just trench across and use that. But, I mean, I don't know. I would just, Chief, I would really just like to have that question answered. Thank you.
In 30 words or less.
Thank you, Mike. Two things. Myself and my senior captain, Captain Godno, when we were both, I think I was a captain, he was a firefighter, went to, I think it was the second meeting of the Police Station Building Committee to ask, can we add the fire station to it? At that time, basically, the answer was no. And I think the reason was, they were desperate for a building. They didn't want anything to slow it down. They were literally keeping evidence in their refrigerator that they use for their lunch, which is a disturbing thing, but that was the truth at the time. So, that's, that's how that didn't go.
They don't do that anymore.
It's not a great location for fire station response time. Even though North School's up the street, we've got some direct roads coming out of North School to get right up to 139 into Chestnut, into Hancock and Chestnut up to North Quincy Street. Central Street for the fire department, because we keep all of our apparatus in-house, we don't have sector cars like the police do in different parts of town because we don't know what truck we're going to use or ambulance or apparatus at the time. For us to leave that, we got to go up, go up Washington, come down, either up the Boulevard or all the way up by Trukey East to eventually hook up to 139. Or go up the other way through Abington Center to go up 123 to try to hook that way. That's a drastically slower response time from that location. That's the main reason. It, we, we honestly don't think it's going to work there. It's a great question. There's land, the, the land itself, you'd have to raise the entire highway department, but even then, the response times when you get into it and you see the traffic we have, you know, that, that's the main issue with that.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else to be heard on Article 12, which does require two-thirds vote for approval? There's a question up top left.
Hi, Doreen Afsa, 560 Bedford Street. Your feasibility study, has it done anything as far as the noise factor? The location you're talking about putting it in is a location that happens to be between a condo complex of Lincoln Village where several of us live, as well as the Bedford Woods condos. In that direct area, there's probably 1,000 tax-paying homeowners that would be impacted a heck of a lot more than if it was at the police site, which to me makes the most sense, Mr. Franey, between the parcel of land that's beside it and empty now and the other building. Has, has noise played any factor, or you guys have just already decided this is where it's going to be?
We, we, if anything, a newer building's going to be quieter than what we have now. Do I have any residents here from Rockland Street or in the 1040 Bedford Street area near our current stations? This is, I'm setting myself up here. I hope not to fail you. But are we loud neighbors? Please be honest. We, we no longer have the horn whistle. You can thank me for that. The apparatus, you know, the, the trucks, when we're starting them in the buildings normally, and then we take off, I, I, I don't believe they're as loud. And the sirens, we can certainly control, and, and we try to be very cognizant of that, most of the people, to be cognizant of the residents that if, if we don't need a siren for traffic, we try not to. So...
Thank you, Chief Nodell.
In addition to the sirens, there was also, for those of us that recall Mr. Schaefer, three years of the build of this school. That was daily construction violations that unfortunately, the town tried desperately to get bear to, to react to the town bylaws timeframe. They really did whatever they wanted to do in the timeframe that whatever suited them. So, there was three years of construction noise that violated the town noise laws. And then in addition to that, we're then going to have to have sirens and, and ambulance all night long for those of us that are in a small geographic area of an awful lot of, of tax-paying homeowners. Doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be heard on Article 12? If not, oh, is that a question?
I have, um, two last.
Let me get you a microphone, please. And you have a question also? We have two questions over in this section. Chris, the lady in the black jacket, and Steve, the, right there with her hand up. Go ahead. Name, uh, name and address, please.
Jane Matiosis, 48 Nile Street. Can you put back the map, though?
Matt, can we scroll back to the map of Glenwood's Way? Thank you.
Now, when you were talking about the North School having issues with the intersections around there, they've always had intersection issues. And I think a fire station there would calm it. You'd put up lights. Like you said, if you could control them, it'd be a lot safer. Over here, you would have the library, the high school, the park that you walk. I mean, what do you do when all these things combined together happen and then you get a call? I mean, it's a safety thing. That's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Ms. Matiosis.
So, the thought process behind this is, the North School has five major intersections around there. That's, that's a lot of different intersections to manage at the same time as opposed to just having to, to manage the Route 18 crossover. And as far as all the traffic is here, this next step would get us to be able to do the, the traffic study necessary to find out. The simple part is obviously throwing up lights. We can control this and dump out, like the chief had mentioned earlier. Putting, stopping the traffic of, at the rotary and, and making this a green light down here and dumping this way out for us to evacuate is, is definitely feasible. But to, to mitigate that issue, we would have a secondary road. Just say hypothetically it was here. If this was all blocked up, we wouldn't need to use that road. We would have this road to access. So, again, it's only one major intersection at either of these intersections to deal with. When you're trying to manage the Birch Plymouth Adams, Washington, 139, that's, those are congested areas.
There's some lights at, is where 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s.
It's the intersections. Those intersections without the lights is, I, I would probably wager to say we respond there more for accidents than, than almost any other intersections in town. But there's definitely a couple of the worst ones, but we go there quite a bit. Again, this is just us trying to give you answers from the feasibility study. We can't answer the other questions until those traffic studies are done. The traffic studies that answer those questions aren't done in the feasibility step. We need to get to the next phase to do that.
Thank you. I'm going to try to see if we can do one more question. Go ahead. If you could state your name and address.
Florence Curvilles, 15 Birch Street. And North School is not, I don't think it's feasible to have fire engines there. There's too many accidents that I've witnessed. That was the same question that that lady had also.
Thank you, Mrs. Curvles. Appreciate it. Anything else to be heard on this matter? Otherwise, we're going to take a vote. Ms. Happel? No? Wendy Happel, state your name and address. There's a microphone coming up behind you.
Hi, I'm Wendy Happel, 40 Adam Street. I just want to say that I was against this project in the beginning, and mostly because it was going to, they were considering North School. When I got involved, I was taking on a tour of both fire stations, and I couldn't believe what we let our firemen and women live in and work in because they barely have enough room to sleep, eat, and breathe in these two stations. There is not enough- There is not enough room for somebody to back in the truck and there's literally probably five inches of space left, so if you back in incorrectly, you're probably going to break a wall down. If I were a husband or a wife of one of the firefighters, I would be horrified of the conditions that they are in. There's so many other districts around us that take better care of their fire people than we do right now and we absolutely need to get a fire station that is suitable for them to live and work in. As far as the North School location, this is a horrible idea. I live on the corner of Adams Street and Washington Street and I encourage any single one of you to come to my home and sit there for 30 minutes and see the amount of traffic accidents that almost occur on a 30-minute basis there. There is a stop sign that people run through, there's a corner that people don't know how to navigate, they don't know how to get through the stop sign because they take either a right or a left around it, which is incorrect. There are so many accidents around this area, whether it's at the top of Route 139 and 58 or at the Plymouth Street, Birch Street area, or down where I live. There is way too much to consider here. The pedestrians that walk around this area have almost been hit on a constant basis. The North School was closed, one of the reasons, because there was over 60 accidents there in one year alone. So, I highly encourage everyone to please vote for this fire station, for our men and women of this community, and to, on Article 13, to please consider voting for it to go to Glenowitz. It's the safest area. It would only help the children at the high school and the middle school and the pre-K to become more involved. It's centralized location so that it's right next to the town hall for all of the items that they have to deal with on a daily basis by interacting with them. It's close to the senior housing, so in case there's an emergency with there, they're a lot closer. I just really, I can't ask for anything more than you guys to please vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you Mrs. Happel. Okay, is that one final question there? Right in the back corner. Just going to wipe off the microphone for you. Then I'd like to proceed to a vote. If you could, state your name and address.
Hi, Gary Coe, 22 Brookfield Road. I'm looking at this map and I can only wonder how long it's going to be before we blast a road to Hancock Street? Is that, looks like it might be going down that way? And certainly that would decrease response time up as far as, what is it, Quincy Street?
Not being proposed for this article.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, what I'd like to do, I have the six ushers who are going to be counting, Mr. Wakeland, Mr. Nagel, Mrs. Riley, Mrs. Mays, Ms. Mays, Mrs. Shea, Mrs. Stark. If you could, because this is a vote to borrow money and bond council wants to know if we got the two-thirds or not, we are going to have to do a count, a standing count, to get the exact votes yea and nay. So, as I, wait, we all get our, my counters are in position? So, the finance committee's motion is to approve this article and to authorize the selectmen of the town to borrow the $3.5 million for the design and development of the new fire station. All those in favor of approving the finance committee's motion, please stand and remain standing until we ask you to sit. What? 14. Mr. Nagel? 16. Mr. Wakeland? 26. Mrs. Stark, or Ms. Mays? 10. Where are we? Mrs. Kelly, Mrs. Shea?
38.
38. Mrs. Stark, where are you? 13. Okay, please be seated. What? You didn't count yourself? All right, so we'll add one more? And you didn't either? All right. Tell us, please count yourself if you'd like to vote. Okay, all those opposed to this article, please stand and remain standing. What did you get from the guest? Kathy? Mr. Nagel, 6. Mr. Wakeland? What? 4. Ms. Mays? 4. Where are we? Mrs. Shea?
0.
0. Mrs. Stark? 1. Please be seated. We're going to wait, make sure our numbers jive. What'd you get? The yea's being 119, the no's being 16. Article 12 passes the two-thirds requirement. Thank you all for your patience and thank you all for your presentation. Moving on to Article 13, which is the purchase of vacant land off Bedford Street to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow the sum of $130,000 to purchase a certain possible land at Zero Bedford Street, map 38, Lot 16. Take any other action relative there. To, Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase or gift the fee or any lesser interest in all or a portion of the real property identified in Article 13 of the warrant. Said property interests to be acquired for general municipal purposes and on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem in the best interests of the town, and to raise and appropriate $130,000 for the purposes stated in this article and anything incidental or related thereto.
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article and to raise and appropriate the funds. So, we're not borrowing the money to purchase this land. We have the money available in the budget to purchase this land, but because it is a purchase of real estate, it does require a two-thirds vote also. Is there any question on Article 13? Gentlemen right here, Kathleen, yep, thank you. State your name and address.
Dan Broman, 222 Linwood Street. The firefighters deserve the best technology available and they deserve the safest conditions. As a Boston News photographer, I stood side by side with firefighters during major fires and I know what the carcinogens are like. But, this lot that's proposed is not a vacant lot. It's woods and it's wetlands, it's wild plants and it's wildlife, and we don't have much of that left. I am for the fire station, but I'm against this location.
Thank you sir. Is there anything else to be heard on Article 13? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 13 by raising and appropriating the $130,000, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, please put your hands down. All those opposed? Moderator declares a two-thirds vote is successful. Article 13 passes. Moving on to, moving on to Article 14, funding of roadway pavement projects. To see if the town will raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, $775,000 to essentially grind and pave Hancock and Lincoln Streets. This also will require a two-thirds vote because we would be borrowing the money over time to pay for these two roadway projects. Is there anything to be heard, oh, sorry, Mr. Sala, the motion from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee moves that $775,000 be appropriated for grinding and paving Hancock and Lincoln Streets, including planning, engineering, design, and equipping and the costs of a project manager and a project designer, and including all construction and/or renovation costs, including the costs of drainage, catch basin, basins, landscaping, site work, and paving, moving, demolition, and disposal of any existing sewer mains and materials, assessment, containment, and/or removal of any hazardous materials, and any and all other costs incidental or related to the project. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer will approve, the treasurer with approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $775,000 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to excuse, execute all documents and take such actions as may be necessary to effectuate the purpose of this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of insurance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you Mr. Sala. I'm sorry, Mr. Sala has to read out a detailed motion that Bond Council drafts for us so that if it doesn't get approved, it has illegal, the town has illegal authority to borrow the money as may be approved by the town. So, the motion is to approve Article 14 to pay for the grinding and paving of Hancock and Lincoln Streets. Are there any questions or anything to be heard on Article 14? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 14, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, if you can put your hands down. All those opposed for Article 14, please raise your hand. Moderator declares a two-thirds vote has passed. Article 14 passes by more than two-thirds. Article 15, planning for building updates of the town offices and public library. Mr. Sala.
A lot of this will sound familiar. The Finance Committee moves that $80,000 be appropriated for the cost of designing, bid, and administrative, for the public library's roof, and $15,000 be appropriated for a feasibility study for the future replacement of the town offices roof, windows, and exterior doors, all of which are approximately 25 years old, and any and all other costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $95,000 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and that necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote, sorry, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to execute all documents and take any, take such actions as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of insurance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this, by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve this by borrowing the $95,000, basically going to be joined in with the other borrowing articles. This will require two-thirds vote. This is to do some planning for the future replacement of the library roof and the town hall, windows and doors, I believe. This is not actually paying to do the work, it's really to investigate what work should be done and what it would cost. Any questions on Article 15? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion on Article 15, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, if you put your hands down. All those opposed, raise your hand. It is unanimous. Article 15 passes. Article 16, revision to the Affordable Housing Trust bylaw to see if the town will vote to amend the Abbott and Affordable Housing Trust bylaw, Section 18.3, by adding the text shown in bold below. Mr. Sala.
I like this motion much better. The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 16. This essentially corrects, last year we approved this article and assigned three-year terms to the Board of Trustees for the housing, Affordable Housing Trust. The Attorney General notified us that the terms could be for no more than two years. So, that change is being made to the bylaw, that there'll be two-year terms, not three-year terms. Anything to be heard on Article 16? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 16, please signify by raising your hands. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Article 17, Article 17, the funding of union contracts. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds, money for the first-year contracts for the firefighters, the police, and the library union. Mr. Sala.
The contracts have been negotiated. The Finance Committee moves to raise and appropriate the sum of $56,724 to pay for the first year of collective bargaining agreement with the Abington Firefighters Local 2080, and the sum of $62,692 to pay for the first year of the collective bargaining agreement with the Abington Mass. Cop Local 476, and the sum of $9,658 for the first year of collective bargaining agreement with the Abington Library Staff Association Local 4928.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve the funding of the first year of the three collective bargaining agreements with the police, fire, well, the fire, police, and library association. Is there anything to be heard on the approval, the motion to approve Article 17? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Article 17 passes unanimously. Article 18, borrowing for the Selsho Regional Vocational School Renovation Project. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve this article. This article is to, actually, the town of Abbott is not borrowing money, this is authorizing the Selsho Votech Regional School District to borrow the money. The total borrowing would be $10,516,372, of which Abington would pay a portion of it. I believe it was 16 point something percent. I'm looking at the superintendent and the accountant, the money man for Selsho Votech. Is there any questions on Article 18? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 18, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Article 18 passes unanimously. So, we'll skip those slides. Matt? Thank you. Article 19, property tax exemption for Gold Star parents. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22nd H, inserted by Chapter 219 of the Acts of 2018, known as the Act Relative of Veterans' Benefits, Rights, Appreciation, Validation, and Enforcement, or the Brave Act, to provide 100% resident real estate tax exemption to Gold Star parents, effective for the tax year beginning on or after January 1st, 2021. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves emphatically to approve Article 19 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee moves to approve Article 19. Gold Star parent is a, for those of you who don't know, is a parent of a son or daughter who was killed in action. Abington does have one Gold Star parent at this time. God forbid we don't have more in the future, but this would be to allow a real estate tax exemption to that Gold Star parent. Is there anything to be heard for Article 19? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 19, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Article 19 passes. For Articles 20 through 32, our zoning amendment articles, as I routinely do, I'm going to step down because I routinely have business with the Abbott and Zoning Board. Going to ask Deputy Moderator Michael Franny to come up. If we could turn to the next slide, Matt. I wanted to take a minute while Mike's coming up, to thank Kevin Tocchi, Abbott and High Schools, Rich Baikowski, our cable TV volunteers, especially Matt Lyons, who's running the laptop for us to put all these slides up there for us, and again, our head custodian Jamie Hoy. Again, the cameramen, the volunteers. I want to thank you guys for all helping out. If we can give them a quick round of applause. And I'd like to turn the podium over to Deputy Moderator Mike Franny.
Sean left the most exciting articles to me, the zoning articles. Articles 20 is to see if the town will vote to amend the Abington zoning bylaws, Section 175-35, by deleting existing tax in its entirety and inserting the following tax in order to update its wording and to confirm the current requirements by FEMA. I don't know if Mr., do you have anything to say on this? Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
Wayne Smith, 120 Summit Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. The article proposes revisions and updates to our existing floodplain and wetlands protection district in order for Abington to remain in compliance with recently updated federal regulations from FEMA. This allows property owners to obtain federally subsidized flood insurance. I have a whole page that I can read to you if there are any questions, but I think that's sufficient. Yes, I'm sorry. And that the Planning Board moves to approve this article.
Thank you Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything further he said on Article twenty? If not, all in favor of the article, kindly raise your hands. All opposed? It's unanimous. Article twenty-one is a zoning amendment to add street addresses to commercial signs. See if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaws, chapter one-seventy-five dash fifty-eight, signs, general requirements, by adding the following new section. Mr. Sala, please.
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
The Planning Board, uh, worked with a professional municipal planner during nine, 2019 and early 2020 to renew, review our current zoning bylaws and asked him to prepare a set of recommendations where we could clean up any conflicts, clarify any wording, or better address the intent and goals of our zoning bylaws. Many of the upcoming zoning amendments can be described as housekeeping articles. Some articles are intended to update our zoning bylaws in order to comply with the new or recently revised federal or state laws, while other amendments are intended to update and improve the wording of certain sections of our zoning bylaw. I will attempt to provide a short explanation and the Planning Board's recommendations for each article as we proceed forward. Article twenty-one proposes to require future freestanding commercial business signs to display the street address of the business. The purpose of this amendment bylaw would be to help customers and assist first responders, especially those emergency personnel who may be responding from other towns, to find the business or building with little or no delay. The Planning Board moves to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Hadn't heard the motion. All in favor of accepting the motion, kindly raise your hand. All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Article twenty-two.
Article twenty-two and twenty-three are housekeeping amendments. The article adds accessory apartment to the list of definitions in section one-seventy-five dash four. The requirements of the accessory apartment are already contained in section one-seventy-five three-two. The Planning Board moves to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions on Article twenty-two? If not, all in favor of the article, kindly raise your hand. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Article twenty-three only inserts the phrase "an in-law affidavit" into the existing text of the noted zoning bylaw in order to clarify the name of the document, which must be filed annually by the owner of an in-law apartment. The Planning Board moves to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any question on Article twenty-two? If, twenty-three, I'm sorry. If not, all in favor of the article, kindly raise your hand. All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Article twenty-four.
This article seeks to encourage and assist commercial development in our town. In the past, the old rule was that if a person owned a large parcel of land, which was transacted by his zoning district boundary line, the entire parcel could be developed in accordance with the zoning regulations which applied to the majority of the parcel. A few years ago, this section was amended to insert a 50-foot limit, which left the remainder of the lot unavailable for commercial purposes unless its use variance was granted by the town. Article twenty-four's amendment does not return to the old rule, but instead seeks to make the zoning bylaw more workable and flexible by adjusting the limit to 100 feet. Anything over 100 feet would still require variances from the zoning board. The Planning Board supports this article. The Planning Board moves to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything further to be said on Article twenty-four? If not, all in favor of the article, kindly raise your hand. All those opposed? Declare two-thirds majority. Article number twenty-five is zoning amendment to delete.
This article is another housekeeping article with our zoning bylaw, when our zoning bylaws were amended a few years ago to delete the Technology Business District, we overlooked the need to delete a note printed in the use chart found on section one-seventy-five dash twenty-one. Amendment only seeks to delete a note which refers to an old zoning district which no longer exists. The Planning Board moves to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. I just want to have Town Council go on record at town meeting that by deleting this, we will not, they will not be able to put a waste facility in the business development district, which is what that land is now zoned. Can Town Council please confirm that that is not possible if we delete this language?
Uh, thank you to you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, good evening, Greg Corbo from Town Council's office. So this, um, zoning bylaw changes is a cleanup, um, to finish up a, an amendment that had already been made. Um, and so it's my understanding that these facilities are already prohibited in the business district, and all that this does is remove a footnote, um, that no longer has a place in the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corbo. Is that acceptable to you, Rick? Okay. Uh, Wayne, did you make a motion? I'm sorry.
I, I thought I did. Uh, the Planning Board moves to approve this article.
Okay. Having heard the motion on Article twenty-six, the motion is to approve it. All in favor, kindly raise your hand.
Uh, that'd be Article twenty-five, I believe.
Twenty-five, I'm sorry. Twenty-five. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, Article twenty-six.
This, uh, Article twenty-six, this proposal, proposed zoning amendment was intended to clarify how the Planning Board can review and process changes to site plans which may occur during actual construction. However, on advice of Town Council, the proposed wording of this zoning amendment is not ready for adoption by the town, and therefore, the Planning Board moves to pass over this article.
Thank you. Haven't heard the motion to pass over. Anything further to be said? If not, all in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Article twenty-seven.
Article twenty-seven is another housekeeping article. The Planning Board worked with a professional consultant who reviewed our zoning bylaws and the proposed sum of the updates, corrections, and revisions which we are discussing tonight. Article twenty-seven updates the current wording of section one-seventy-five, three-two-D as, so that it is consistent with other sections of our zoning bylaw, namely, section one-seventy-five fourteen. Section one-seventy-five fourteen recites to you that you need a variance if a property owner proposed to have more than one principal building on a lot, unless the property is developed with, uh, multiple buildings pursuant to section one-seventy-five three-two. Therefore, the mention of a need for a variance in section one-seventy-five three-two needs to be deleted in order to bring consistency and clarity to our zoning bylaw. This article does not change the 50-foot building separation requirement, and the Planning Board has voted to recommend approval of this article. The Planning Board moves to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything further to be said on Article twenty-seven? If not, all in favor, kindly raise your hands. All opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you for sticking with us. I sometimes think of these things as Abbotton's versions of the Dead Sea Scrolls, they're so hard to understand. Article twenty-eight.
This update to section one-seventy-five three-nine was also suggested by a professional planning consultant. The Muppet Zoning District is intended to allow low-impact commercial development west of Hancock Street and north of Chestnut Street. In order to encourage limited commercial development and avoid large residential developments, this article revises the minimum lot size requirements from three, from 10 acres to three acres. It does not change any frontage regulations nor the requirements that, a proposal must also be approved pursuant to a site plan review bylaw. We recommend approval of this article to help promote commercial development while retaining reasonable restrictions and permit, uh, requirements by the town. The Planning Board moves to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Haven't heard the motion by the Planning Board to approve. All in favor of approving, kindly raise your hand. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Mr. Pratt.
Hello, uh, two-thirty, Robert Pratt, 239 Walnut Street. Will this make it easier for, uh, commercial usage of that area where there is, um, uh, that is defined by the state of Massachusetts to be wetland with several endangered species living in that area?
No, it will not.
So it's not going to be easier for, uh, large developments to be put in that area, is that correct?
This would be a small development, the, uh...
But it's still, it's still in the wetland.
Well, the law that, that's in there now, it needs to have 10 acres. Now we're reducing it to three.
But why?
Well, in some cases, you'll find that you can put, there'll be less land utilized.
But it's still the wetlands in there, by, defined by the state of Massachusetts.
If it's wetlands, they cannot build on wetlands.
I've heard that before, too.
Well, it's a 100-foot buffer zone.
Whatever. You're gonna, you're gonna approve it whether we want it or not?
Sir? Okay, this is, um, the area around 940 Hancock Street. Oh, yeah, Dan Broman, 222 Lynnwood Street. This is one of the most pristine wetland areas. Um, used to be an Atlantic white cedar swamp, uh, the best filtration system on earth, and it's totally free. The state has designated this as core habitat with species of conservation concern, this whole area. The area filters our water for free. There's trees, there's plants, there's cat nine tails, there's marshlands. It's all producing oxygen for us, and it's a beautiful, beautiful place that if it was conservation land, a lot of people could go there and contemplate nature because it's disappearing in this town. The Planning Board has approved plans for warehouses, but they're not practical because they would take up too much land. So the zoning board, uh, disapproved that. But now, you're talking about putting in commercial condos and housing units. I have that directly from the Planning Board. And, um, I'm totally against Article twenty-eight because, um, I, I was told by the town manager that this is going to make the land more viable. But, you know, people, what's more viable than the oxygen that we breathe and going and seeing, um, spring peepers and, uh, you know, um, dragonflies and, and all that stuff? That stuff's disappearing, and if we don't protect and conserve our nature... Okay, my wife's kicking me. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on Article twenty-eight? Yes?
Paul Ferris, 1020 Hancock Street, Abington, Mass. Um, I know exactly what this property is and what this amendment article wants to do. I just want to say that I want you to think about your property in allowing this regulation to pass. They can plop whatever they want next to your property. They're shrinking the area, the restrictions on the area of where they can place a development, whether it be a warehouse, whether it be an apartment building, whatever the case may be, they want to shrink the area where they can put it closer to your property. I vote against this regulation. Amendment article.
Sorry. Thank you, sir. Anything further to be said on Article twenty-eight? If not, haven't heard the motion... Oh, I'm sorry.
Over here.
Right there.
Yep, yep. Come on.
It's on the microphone. It's past my bedtime, I'm kind of... Sorry about that.
Henry Beckfold, 165 Temple Street. When you go through this track of land that they're talking about, there's deer, there's beaver. We are the land of many beaver, or waving grass, uh, but they're a beaver. And as, as Dan said, um, this is land that we're losing. Every time we put in these developments, we take away the habitats of other living beings, not just human beings, other living beings. Think about that when you want to vote on this particular one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Rick?
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. I am a member of the Planning Board. Just to clarify a few points, uh, if you deny or vote down this, um, article, it will have zero impact on 940 Hancock Street. Zero impact, because 940 Hancock Street is 28 acres. This would reduce it to three acres. Again, just to be clear, because I said this multiple times already, this article has zero impact on 940 Hancock Street. Zero. Just to be clear, I voted against that project, but here's the problem, people can develop their land. So if people do not want these parcels of land developed all along Chestnut Street, the town needs to buy them and put conservation restrictions on them. Otherwise, you're telling landowners they cannot develop their land. I hope we do that. That would be great. But that means next year at town meeting, we need articles where the town buys this land and preserves it. We cannot just tell pro, private property owners they can't build on it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Yes, Mr. Pratt.
It's me again. Well, if, if this has zero impact on this, then why, why is this article out here, first of all? And everyone that's... Hold on, there's my hearing aid. And second of all, everyone that spoke, uh, against this amendment is, is correct. Uh, we're, we're not tree huggers. We just want lands set aside for our future, uh, our future generations so they can enjoy what's left of this stuff. It's, it's shrinking every day. I, I was, uh, I, I've been telling people that they need to do things and, but no one wants to do it, so I decided to step up and say, well, I've been wanting to do things, I should be able to step up and do it myself. This is wrong. It seems like you guys are shrinking things around so it's easier for developers to get in there and build things that people on Hancock Street don't want, and the, at least the tree huggers don't want it either. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Uh, yes, ma'am.
I just want to say to Rick Collins, um, you know, I appreciate what he's saying. We really do need to put this into conservation land, and there's a lot of money out there to do this. The CPA money, there's, uh, money by Wildlands Trust, the, there's a lot of money, the DCR gives money for trails, a lot of money. They have, they have deep pockets. There's, there's a lot of ways we can do this, but if we don't work together to save this land, like, um, Bob's saying, um, we're not, we're, we're going to lose it, we're going to have condos down there, and then the water that's going down Beaver Brook into Cleveland Pond and down into our wells is going to be, you know, not, not clean, you know? And, and so I, I applaud Rick for saying that, you know, we really do need to put this into conservation land, and, and Rick, maybe you can help us to write some articles so that we can do this in the fall meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, over here, on your left.
Hi, Terry Mays, 1020 Hancock Street. I want to know what the difference is between this article and the article we voted against at the last town meeting, because the last town meeting, that article did have a direct impact on 940 Hancock Street, and now, even though we heard that on the introduction to this article, now we're hearing it's not. So which is it? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else? Mr. Smith, could you answer that question, please?
Yeah, I, I really, I, I really don't know that... We had this on the agenda last year, uh, at the last town meeting, the last two town meetings, and it...
and, and we passed over all of the articles we had from the, from the planning board. So I don't, I don't know what particularly that you were talking about.
Mr. Collins, please.
Rick Collins, zoning for Orange Street. Just to clarify for Ms. Mays, I believe what the article did last year was reduce the required frontage from 200 feet to 93 feet, 90 feet, something like that, which is why the project was denied by the zoning board in the first place. I believe that's what the article did last year. It would have essentially approved it.
Is that true?
Well, the zoning board of appeals did not allow the frontage on that road.
I just want to reiterate, too, that I've lived in this town all my life. We voted to buy Strawberry Valley because they wanted to put a medical center there, and the town bought that. Griffith's Dairy, which everybody here, I'm sure, has been down and enjoyed with the food trucks and everything, that was purchased for open space, but every now and then, they try to submit development for that. I think we have an opportunity here. Even though these people own this land, we need to buy this land for conservation for the town so that we have some open space for our children and their children, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything further to be said? On Article 28? Go ahead.
Pat Kearney, 652 Adams Street. I just want to know why it seems like the planning board seems to think that their mission is to approve commercial development and enhance commercial development in the town. They also need to represent the citizens, the residents, and the people that want open spaces. It's, it's not just about all getting all this commercial revenue in here and making all these concessions so people can come in this town and do what they want. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything further to be said on Article 28? If not, this is a zoning article, it requires a two-thirds vote. So if all those people that are in favor of this article on Mr. Smith's motion kindly raise your hand. All the people that are against it. Article does not pass. Article 29, zoning amendment to require multifamily variances in HC zone. Mr. Smith, please.
The planning board believes that this article needs further consideration and review, and after holding our required public hearings, the board voted to not recommend its approval as presented presently drafted. The planning board moves to pass over this Article 29.
Thank you. Having heard Mr. Smith's motion to pass over, all those in favor passing over kindly raise your hand. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Article 30, Mr. Smith, please.
The amendment adds language to require additional landscaping or other architectural details to improve the view of a building from the street. Due to the shape of some lots, a property owner may propose to rotate a building sideways, and this amendment puts property owners on notice that the planning board may require extra attention to the street view and increased landscaping or buffers on any submitted plans. The planning board moves to approve this article.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on Article 30? No questions? If not, all those in favor of Mr. Smith's recommendation kindly raise your hands. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Article 31.
Article 31 and 32 both, both were recommended by Town Council as a means of keeping our zoning bylaws consistent with recently revised state laws and restrictions regarding marijuana for medical aid, medical and for adult purposes. Our medical marijuana dispensary requirements are found on Section 175-24.1 of our zoning bylaws, and the amendments proposed in Article 31 reflect the state's change to now refer to medical marijuana dispensaries as medical marijuana treatment centers or MTCs. There are also edits to our bylaw which clarify certain terms, match new state regulations, and ensure that this bylaw is up to date. The planning board moves to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything further to be said on Article 31? Any questions? If not, all in favor? Yep, Sean? I don't think these potheads are going to accept that.
I've written down another sheet. The planning board moves to approve the article with the word "to" to be inserted into the blank space found in the revised Section 175-24.1I-2A, thus requiring a medical marijuana treatment center to remove all materials, plants, equipment, and other paraphernalia within two months of surrendering its state license or permits.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything further to be said on Article 31? If not, all in favor of Mr. Smith's motion kindly signified by raising your hand. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Article 32, Mr. Smith, please.
Town Council has prepared the amendments contained in Article 32 to update Section 175-24.3 of our zoning bylaw and keep it consistent with the new state laws and regulations affecting adult-use retail stores and new delivery laws. Definitions are being added, and updated restrictions are being put in place so that Abington can stay ahead of the new license applications which might be submitted in the future under the new state laws. The planning board moves to approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything further to be said on Article 32? If not, all in favor of Mr. Smith's motion kindly signified by raising your hand. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you for putting up with me.
Thank you, Mr. Franny. We will continue on. My next articles, Articles 33 through 37. Article 33 is a citizen's petition to dedicate and rename town buildings, and Article 34 is a citizen's petition to dedicate and rename the middle high school. These two articles must be ruled out of order. No discussion or vote will be taken for these two articles. Town meeting has no authority to vote to dedicate or rename a town building. The issue of petition should instead be addressed directly with the Board of Selectmen or the school committee. Therefore, for the record, for Article 33, the moderator rules Article 33 to be out of order, and no action shall therefore be taken by town meeting on this article. For Article 34, the moderator rules Article 34 to be out of, out of order, and no action shall therefore be taken by town meeting on this article. Moving on to Article 35. 35 is a citizen's petition to remove the fire chief position from civil service. The article is filed as a petition, another citizen's petition article, must also be ruled out of order. The change proposed by this petition will require an amendment to our town charter, which is the legal document that establishes and defines the structure and distribution of powers for our town government. In accordance with state law, a charter amendment requires a two-thirds vote of approval by town meeting and a subsequent vote of approval at a town-wide ballot box vote. Because the wording of the petition article did not properly notify the voters that they would be asked to vote to amend the town charter tonight, this petition article is not in proper form, and a vote cannot be taken tonight. Any vote would be taken, would be beyond the scope of the article. Therefore, as moderator, I must rule Article 35 to be out of order, and no action can be taken on this article this evening. To Article 36, another citizen's petition to require the withdrawal of the regional police dispatch agreement. This was also filed, this is a citizen's petition, and must again be ruled out of order. By state law, the decision and authority to enter into or withdraw from a regional dispatch agreement is vested solely with the Board of Selectmen. Town meeting does not have the authority to direct or require the Board of Selectmen to take any action desired in this petition article. In fact, the state law requiring regional dispatch agreements was amended in 2010 to specifically remove the requirement that town meeting must vote to ratify or oppose a selectman's decision, and therefore, this article's requested vote would have no legal effect. Thus, if the petitioners would like to pursue the issue, they should do so at a Board of Selectmen's meeting. As moderator, I must rule 36, Article 36 to be out of order, and no action will be taken on this article this evening. In the, in the future, if anyone would like to file a citizen's petition, we're more than happy to try to work with you with the wording and the proposed and the intent of the article, either through the town manager's office or contacting me directly, be more than happy to help you out. But we cannot change the wording of a petition article. We have to print it and work with it as it's submitted. So moving on, first of all, I would like to remind you that when we do break after Article 37, I'd ask you to please stay in your seats until the ushers ask your section to leave. Under our social distancing bylaw, which this might be the last town meeting where we have to have some of the regulations, thank you to all of you who are getting vaccinated, please wait for your ushers to direct you to the appropriate exit door. So to Article 37, a citizen's petition to adopt military leave status. Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws, will the residents of Abington vote to approve Massachusetts law Title V, Chapter 33, Section 59, effect of military service on salary seniority and leave allowances of public employees or any other act law relative to military leave for town employees? Please see the provided law for further information. Submitted by petition, Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over this article. We had a lot of discussion about this particular article and a lot of discussion with both the police chief and the fire chief, who are the more, more likely to have members of their staff out on military leave, whether it be Reserve or National Guard. And we, with this, we thought there were a lot of unknowns and a lot of burden on the town in regards to the way the wording of this law is, but we, we have asked the town manager to bring this up as a collective bargaining point with both the police and fire unions to bargain in a agreement from the town to the unions that would be the essence of what this law says.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. The Finance Committee makes a motion to pass over Article 37. Are any questions or anything to be heard on Article 37? It's a question to the rear.
I'm not going to take that long because I know everyone's dying to get home. Allison Sullivan, 121 Randolph Street. If this is passed over, is there something we can be taking up at a later date, at a later town meeting? Because I know this is an issue that has been brought to my attention on several occasions, especially because how much our reserves were activated, our National Guard was activated during this past year, and the time that they had to take off from their spots here at the Abington PD, and the financial burden that's been placed on them and their families. So is this something that can be taken up at a later date if it is passed over?
Yes, it can be brought forward at another meeting. I think that, I think everyone, I don't want to speak for you guys, but they wanted to discuss this in more detail for the, the effects on the town budget and on the town employees themselves.
Okay, because my understanding from this is that we actually have to approve it here in the town because of the fact that it's a state law and it has to go to individual towns, but we're maybe one of three towns, maybe four towns in the Commonwealth that does not have this already enacted, so that's kind of something we should really think about.
Thank you. Anything else to be heard on Article 37? If not, all those in favor of approving, the Finance Committee's motion to pass over Article 37, please raise your hand. Thank you, all those opposed? The eyes have it. Article 37 is passed over. Before we break, I just want to let you know, the Abington Celebrates Committee wanted to let you know that they will be celebrating on the weekend of Friday, July, June 11th through Sunday, the 13th, with golf tournament, scout encampment at Island Grove, Civil War encampment, a kids' fishing derby, a guided history tour of Island Grove, Bakkerpalooza at the dog park, all sorts of stuff going on at Abington Celebrates. You can check them out on Facebook to celebrate the town of Abington. Mr. Sala makes a motion to adjourn the town meeting. I'd like to declare the Abington Town Meeting to be adjourned at 9:46 PM. Thank you very much for your attendance.